We convene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certified closed session, please?
Madam Chair, certified to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Is there a second?
A second.
I'm gonna give it to Mrs. Chen.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And I will turn it over to Dr. Heron for the announcements and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second week of the 2024-25 school year is underway, and we're excited to have staff and students back. Take a look at the excitement across our buildings last week. We wish all of our staff, students, and families an incredible school year. Also, join us on September 11th at 6:00 p.m. for a Virtual Family Academy session, Generative AI at the Classroom and Beyond. We'll explore the basics of generative AI and offer practical tips for families to guide responsible use at home. Whether you're new to AI or want to learn more, this session will equip you with the tools to navigate the digital age. Visit wjccschools.org to register. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. It was a fun video to see all the happy faces to be back and full schools and lots of noise again. So that's wonderful. Are there any other announcements or reports from anyone? I don't think... Oh, Mr. Hoseng?
Yes, we had a New Horizons Board of Trustees meeting last week, and we did a reorganization of the board, and I was elected as the vice chair for the Board of Trustees moving forward for the year. We currently have an interim executive director, and so we're in the process of looking for an executive director for the New Horizons facilities. We've set the meetings for the rest of the school year. I think there's five more that we're gonna be having. And then we also talked just very briefly regarding the students that I had mentioned, I think in May of this year, that were going to national competitions and how they fared. And most of them finished in the top half of the competitors, some finished in the top 10. So we had a very good turnout and performance for our students at those national competitions.
Thank you, and congratulations on your election to vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Heron, for our next agenda item, the Preschool Design Center update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're delighted this evening to have an update on our design for the preschool centers. And Dr. Kiefer is going to introduce our special guest this evening. Thank you, Dr. Kiefer.
Thanks, Dr. Heron. This evening, we are thrilled to bring you what we consider to be the final design update around the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Centers. You may remember a presentation to the board in September of 2023, some of you, but then also presentations to the board in March of '24 and April of '24. And this presentation this evening will encapsulate all of the strong design work that's gone into it from our partners in this process at Blue Justice Upton and PBK. Melissa Turnbaugh, who you've seen on screen a number of times, is joining us in person this evening for a run-through of that design process and to give you an update. Melissa?
Well, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here. It's nice to see, I've seen you virtually. It's nice to see you again in person. We're so honored to be here and share with you a little bit about what we've been up to and kind of the updates in the design process. So a few of the things that I'm gonna cover, and I'd be remiss to not also share that I'm here with my team from PBK as well as Blue Justice Upton. So it has been a great collaboration with this team as well as a lot of our additional consulting partners. And so I'm gonna share a little bit about what we've been up to. So some of kind of the site overview, where we've been, project status, some value engineering considerations and updates, cost estimate, schedule, and then kind of where we go next. So you remember, this is taking place at two different campuses. The first campus is Claribird Baker. It is coming up at the front, newly acquired property, kind of at the front, near the street. In this process, we've had a lot of great collaboration and back and forth with the county, with a lot of the utilities, a lot of the permitting, so we're still in the heart of the permitting process. But this is where this is located. We have a prototype, so this is going to be the same at both campuses. So it's really exciting to have that kind of equity and parity for all of the students. Similarly, at Norg, Norg is in the back of the campus, and our heart behind this was really trying to be minimally disruptive to the existing elementary school and take away as little of their playground space and keep that intact, as well as keeping the Bright Beginnings students safe. And so they are in the back of the campus and have their dedicated play space there. The final stages of design, so we have been so blessed to be working on this now. And so we are in the final nuances. We, I just delivered some of the final samples that we're selecting for materials. We have had a lot of great collaboration back and forth with the district and understanding what are the best practices for this age group, what are things that are soft but easy to clean, that really support instruction, wayfinding, but also inspire kind of peace and calm, but also inspiration since this is the beginning of their educational journey. So we're really excited about the color palette. It also helps with wayfinding. We have four different kind of color schemes, all kind of in the very natural blue and green tones to keep calm and peaceful, but that help with wayfinding through this campus. We also, about a couple of weeks ago, were honored to sit down with the team and go through a detailed page turn. So this was all of the specifications, this was all of the drawings. And we looked at making sure we had the correct systems, the correct operations, that the classrooms were laid out appropriately, that we were doing everything in accordance with the standards of the district because we want to make sure that while this is a unique campus, that we're not doing anything that would be burdensome to maintenance operations or hard to maintain. And so we did that, had a lot of great kind of red lines that we have taken back and are incorporating into our next issuance. And so this was with the 90% set of drawings and specifications. Similarly, I think the last time I was honored to speak with you, we had just started the dialogue about value engineering. I think it's always a good idea for us to make sure we're being good stewards of resources and we're making decisions that might be, you know, frugal and economical but not hinder instruction. And so all of the value engineering that we went through and a whole myriad of topics and systems, we looked at things that, again, wouldn't hinder instruction but might save some resources. So what you're looking at on the screen right now is an effort to get rid of some of the glazing so that we still have a lot of transparency, which is great for, you know, observational security. It's also great for natural light and learning, but we reduced it by 15 to 20%, which would save us some money. Similarly, we looked at built-in caseworks, so this is all of the kind of fixed furniture. And so we said if, you know, we could reduce 10 to 15%, it really wouldn't change the instructional classroom in that day, but it might help us save quite a bit of money. And so we made some of those tweaks and adjustments and worked with the district on what things could potentially be kind of tweaked and allocated. Also in the materials that we're selecting. So changing to a plastic laminate countertop instead of a solid surface can also save quite a bit of money. So again, making sure we're being really good stewards with the resources. As a part of our 60% estimate, we, our 60% set of drawings, we received a third-party estimate. And so this estimate went through that set of drawings and gave us a predicted price. They also had some money for, you know, design and estimating contingency since it was only technically a 60% set. And so we took that, we vetted it, we used that to help inform some value engineering potential. But we also went out to some local contractors that the district has worked with before. We did that for two reasons. One, it's always good to have kind of some checks and balances of, is that third-party estimate really in line? Is it, you know, contextual? And so we got some great feedback about subcontractors, markets, things to consider, what they're seeing in the market. But it also is a good opportunity for us to get excitement about this project so that when it does advertise and it hit the street, that we have great participation. Because the better participation typically means the best price. And so everyone we spoke with was really excited about it and said that right now is actually, towards the end of the year, is gonna be a great time for this to potentially hit the streets and be advertised, which is kind of our timeline and next step. So we have been, again, we've been busy working on documents and drawings. We are hoping, again, with this collaboration with the county, going back and forth on permits, that we receive a permit before the end of the year and that also we hope to see you hopefully back in December with bids. Some of that will be contingent upon the permitting process. But I'll say, this project is so exciting, and I've been talking a lot about it because I haven't seen anything quite like it that has an early childhood campus that is completely inclusive for all students. And as I have shared, I think others are really excited, this is a really timely project. And I think you are gonna be trendsetters in this because so many students are coming across the country to schools with a lot of different needs and learning styles. And the fact that you guys are so forward-thinking in this, that not one classroom or two classrooms can accommodate, but every classroom, every playground, has that potential and kind of inclusive nature. And so I think it's really exciting. So we're hoping that this all comes to fruition quickly and that we can start and kind of the notice to proceed at the end of this year and then really get started with students potentially coming as quickly as fall and December, December of next year of '26. And then depending on the permitting, worst-case scenario, August, that next fall. So with that, that's kind of my quick update. But if you have any questions, I'd be honored to answer them.
Ms. Donner, go ahead.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have a question regarding some of the places where we're doing sort of the value. And just with the laminate countertops versus a solid surface, and so the savings upfront versus having to replace down the line because they tend to peel and not last as long. And so how do you balance that initial installation versus maintenance costs?
Right. That's a great question. We worked with the district to try to balance some of those. We don't want to do anything that's a quick solution in a long-term problem. I think certain plastic laminates are designed to be more impact resistant. They can be wet and they can have more durability. We know with these kiddos and washing hands, that's gonna be important. We tried to take the plastic laminate and solid surfaces out of spaces that students wouldn't interact. So near sinks and things like that, we're gonna keep that. But we balance that because ultimately, we have to make sure we're getting this project within budget. And so when we looked at some of the budget numbers, it seemed like something that we could do. One of the things that we're exploring is, as a part of bid day, having bid alternates so that we can get the best, best price is always on bid day. And so if we look at, for example, plastic laminate or solid surface, we're also looking at fencing. If we, if we look at that on bid day, we will get the most competitive price, and then we can weigh the options and see what is best. You know, would we rather have an ornamental fence, but it will, you know, cost a little bit more? Or are we okay with, you know, a vinyl-coated fence? So we're trying to build in as much flexibility in decision-making at that time, but also afford it.
Mrs. Henley?
Yes, can you help me understand? So if it's not a December opening, possibly August, that's eight more months away. What, how did y'all come up with that? Like, what, could it have been April? Or is it just, it goes an eight-month, what kinds of things would cause an eight-month delay?
Well, candidly, I think it could be April. I think the dialogue had been for this age group and to have it minimally disruptive, either a mid-year opening so that students are coming back after, you know, the holiday break into a new environment, or in the fall as opposed to mid-semester, I think has been the conversation. Because it's also hard, not just for the students, especially being as young as they are, but also the teachers and instruction and procurement and moving in and being trained in a new facility. And so it is definitely a potential that it could be a February or a March. But we thought, logistically, it might be best to either do a mid-year or a fall. So there is some variety.
Right, and additionally, Ms. Henley, there, until we move towards the bid process and have final approvals from the county, there will be a series of dates that we say best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, worst-case scenario. And we want to have both of those dates in front of people to understand that ideally it would be this, but there is a potential for an additional question on our site plan submission to delay it by several weeks, as an example.
That's great. Riffel?
I'm looking at the Norg diagram here. Is that a water pond? Or it's very large next to some roadway.
Sorry.
The rendering picture? Oh, yes, you can see it. See, it's like a...
Yeah, so as a part of our permitting requirements, we have to have onsite water retention and detention. And so that is where we're having it. There's some existing, if you can kind of see on the picture to the left, although not, you know, blue and filled with water, that is where it currently resides. So it made sense to keep it in a similar line, so we had, you know, minimal infrastructure improvements. So that's, that's what that is.
All right, my second question, and I just, I talked to a master gardener this weekend, and they're like, when you build things, like, we should maybe think about having native plants being considered. I know we have like shrubs and things like outlined in this thing. Is that something that we're considering in this type of?
Absolutely. So some of the, I'll say the playgrounds, we have some natural landscaping because of the inclusive nature of it, and we wanted to make sure of it, and we wanted to make sure we didn't have a lot of mulch and things that are harder for students with mobility challenges. We have a lot of, you know, rubberized surfaces and turf. But in the surrounding areas where it, that we don't have those surfaces, we're absolutely considering it. I think that's the best from a stewardship, it's best from maintenance, right? If it's native, it's gonna be easier to maintain, which is always our best practice. So yeah, absolutely. That's great.
I actually have one more.
Oh, good.
Are we considering some type of like solar roof or anything like that? I think that's something that there are potential grants from the state. I, if I'm, I work in the state, so it's a little weird thing. But new constructions, pre-k facilities have like a designated story. This is like maybe above where everyone is, but...
We are trying to position ourselves as a school division to put solar in where it makes sense. It will not be built with solar out of the gate. It could be a scenario where we add solar down the road. I believe in our design process, it allows for that to occur.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other, oh, Mrs. Donner?
I have one more question. I know that we've probably talked about this when we were aboard and we first were going through this, but I think we've got a new board. And so in looking at that, right, there is that large, open play area at Norg, which they don't have access to anymore. Like, what are the impacts for that school in terms of the kids having free areas to run in beyond just the playgrounds?
That's a, that's a great question. And I think that one of the things that, as a school division, we've tried to look at proactively is how best to situate the buildings, recognizing that these campuses were built as elementary schools and not necessarily built initially to house additional facilities. We were able to get that accomplished in a stronger way at CBB with the land that the county purchased and dedicated to the project in the upper right-hand corner. It's not upper right-hand corner. It's the way I remember it, upper right-hand corner. At Norg, there will be initially less play space for students, but there is also a possibility that I think is being looked at for the green space that you see almost perpend, running parallel to Richmond Road to potentially become property of the county or the school division, which would allow for some additional play space in the near future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before I ask mine? You mentioned several times permitting issues and if, if the county, you know, negotiations with the county, can you elaborate on what those are or stand on that?
This is take time. We are working diligently through our team to submit site plans and receive comments back. And most recently, we've been challenged with looking at a couple of potential additions that might need to be incorporated into the site plan, which potentially could add some time factors to the project itself. As an example, we were recently, it was suggested that in order to fit the ordinance relative to commuter and bike scenarios, that we needed to consider bike lanes in front of both Claribird Baker and Norg. That's not something that we had necessarily put into the site plan initially and potentially would delay final approval to be able to move forward until we were able to meet the ordinance or receive some type of exception to that ordinance. So it's examples similar to that that sometimes challenge a process. We submitted the site plan, we get comments back on the site plan that the engineering team and the architectural team go back and look at and try to respond to. And it's a navigation piece that generally takes two or three submittals before something is officially approved from the planning department. Does that help address your question?
I think so. So it's our, you know, essentially the board of supervisors that's making these final decisions, or no?
No, the board of supervisors signed off on the special use permit back in June. And once that is done, then the site plan process really begins to kick up. And the site plan piece is handled by the planning department at the county level with input from various departments that have ownership. So for instance, a site plan may be looked at by JCSA, the Sewer Association, the James City County Sewer and Water, maybe VDOT, maybe other pieces of the James City County Governance Structure providing feedback on the site plan itself, whether it be landscape, lighting, parking, all of those kinds of scenarios.
Or the tricycle track.
Or the bike lanes that we are, tricycle track that we're working to try to maneuver through.
So the bike lane would have to be accessible to the public or to, to the people using the facility?
There is a, I believe there's a county ordinance that talks specifically about when you are updating pieces of property or making adjustments to the property that you need to take into consideration the need for adding a bike lane in front of that piece of property.
And if we did that, would that connect to an existing bike lane? Or are we just putting a strip of, yeah, bike lane?
Without the plans in front of me, Ms. Ordigo, I don't believe in either site. There is currently a bike lane in place before or after the school campus. There would be, for a period of time, a bike lane just in that area. I do understand from the planning department that other permits and site plans that were to come forward would have a similar obligation to add a bike lane.
Yeah, they've shared that it's a long-term vision to have that to be accessible, and this is kind of would be a beginning of the implementation. And we're working through how we can respectfully fulfill some of that, but also there are challenges with our sites, with right-of-way and just safety that we want to make sure we're also being cognizant of. So we're collaborating with them and trying to come up with a solution that hopefully, again, is fiscally conservative for this project, but also would meet the needs of what they're looking for long-term.
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly hope that it wouldn't be county issues that, you know, have a significant delay since I know our county partners are just as excited about this as, as we are, so...
And I think when we're talking about timeline, obviously, we're ready. It's designed, we're ready to go. So we're really literally working through the county process right now and look... It's designed, we're ready to go. So we're really literally working through the county process right now and look forward to really everybody working together to have that resolved as soon as possible, because we really need to get to the earlier date.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments before we close it out? Okay, I think that was it. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, um we're going to, we had moved um we moved that one item up so that we could um allow our um our guests to leave. Um so we will now move on to item six, proposed agenda item six point zero one, review amendment to FY twenty-five grants fund grant grants fund budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to give us a quick update tonight on additional grant funding manate to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harren. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This agenda item for your consideration is to amend our grants fund budget to reflect additional grant funds that we've received.
Back to the.
Additional grant funds that we've received in the amounts of three hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. The final state budget included state and federal funding for school safety and security grants for public schools statewide. Our allocation of these funds is one hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. These funds will be used to continue addressing items in the TRV report. In addition, we were awarded a school security officer grant again to support the nine security officers at our elementary school. This grant award is two hundred six thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. With the addition of these grant funds, our new grants fund budget will total eight million, four hundred sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Are there any questions from the board? No, doesn't doesn't look like it. Thank you. Our money is usually good. Not a lot of a lot of pushback. All right, item six point zero two, review twenty twenty-four, twenty-five textbook selection and adoption proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Ms. Ford and Ms. Moonpoint are going to give us a an update on the textbook selection and adopter adoption proposal for this year. This is something we do annually with the board and we're pleased to have them with us this evening.
Good afternoon, Dr. Harren, Madam Chair and members of the school board. Ms. Moonpoint and I are pleased to share the curriculum and instruction department's textbook selection and adoption proposed work plan for the upcoming school year with you today. We will begin with a summary review of all content areas included in this proposal and then provide additional details for each content area later in the presentation. This year, our department recommends WJCC conduct the textbook selection and adoption process to address textbook and textbook material needs for courses in three content areas, English Language Arts, Math, and Science. When prioritizing which content areas and courses to focus on in a given school year, our team considers revisions to the standards of learning by the Board of Education, the availability of course textbooks, and the age of current WJCC textbooks and textbook materials. New standards of learning have been approved by the Board of Education for K twelve, English, and Math. The most recent textbook purchase for K five math was in two thousand ten and in two thousand sixteen for AP Environmental Science. We plan to distribute the selection and adoption processes for the content areas across the school year based on timelines that support the scope of the review work for each course or content area and ensure the work is completed in accordance with WJCC's spending timelines. Each course or content timeline will include a community period during which WJCC staff, parents, guardians, and community members will have access to print and digital textbook materials under consideration to review and provide feedback using a community evaluation rubric. The CNI department will also host an evening textbook fair for each content area to provide staff and community members the opportunity to view materials and speak with curriculum leaders. The WJCC project timeline is based on the availability of the VDOE's approved textbook list. We will provide an update to Dr. Harren to bring back to the school board if a change in the VDOE's approval timeline impacts our process. The estimated cost to purchase textbooks and textbook materials for the content areas in this proposal are based on preliminary quotes provided by vendors. At this time, we do not have an estimated cost for K five math textbooks because the Virginia Department of Education has not released the list of math curricula being reviewed for approval. We anticipate the list will be published in late fall. Our team recommends that the review committee for each content area be composed of a school board member, division staff such as a CNI director, a curriculum coordinator, and an instructional technology team member, school administrators, general educators, and specialists representing the course under consideration, and parents and guardians. We will begin with an overview of the review and selection process for elementary math. Upon the board's approval of the proposed work plan, we will initiate communication with staff, parents, and guardians and the community to form the review committee. The review process will be designed in two phases. First, the commu- committee will review the initial list of math curricula under consideration and consider staff and community feedback in order to narrow the list of curricula to two programs. The second phase of the re- review process will involve placing copies of the top two curricula in every elementary school for a two-week period to support the opportunity for all elementary teachers to review the curricula and provide feedback. The review committee will convene for a final meeting to consider all feedback gathered over the four-month period and select the curriculum that will be recommended for adoption. Our goal will be to conclude the review and selection process in March and present the committee's recommendation to you at the April first school board meeting. The design of the evaluation rubric and the review of math textbook content will focus on criteria in nine categories listed here. Design, alignment to curriculum, instruction, and assessment, teacher, student, and parent resources, vendor support to ensure effective implementation of the adopted curriculum and cost. The scope of a K five math curriculum selection and adoption process requires a large committee representative of the school board, division staff, elementary administrators and specialists, classroom teachers representative of the sixth grade levels, higher education, and parents of elementary students. To support a comprehensive review of grade-level materials, the members of the review committee will work in three subgroups. The review committee will make a final selection and adoption recommendation informed by subgroup input and feedback collected through the staff and community review process. At this time, Ms. Moonpoint will present details for the selection and adoption processes for secondary courses.
Good evening. I will provide an overview of the English Language Arts work plan. Upon the board's approval of the proposed work plan, the work of the review committee and communication to inform staff, parents, guardians, and community members of the selection and adoption process will begin immediately. Our goal will be to conclude the textbook selection process in December and present the committee's recommendation to you at the January two thousand twenty-five school board meeting. The work of the review committee and the evaluation rubrics will be organized according to the components listed here. Within each component, materials under consideration will be evaluated according to specific criteria to include organizational design, alignment to the two thousand twenty-four standards of learning, interactive elements, and digital content. The scope of the English Language Arts curriculum selection and adoption process requires a large committee representative of the school board, division staff, secondary administrators and specialists, classroom teachers representative of the seven grade levels and AP courses, and families. To support a comprehensive review of grade-level materials and AP materials, the members of the review committee will work in three subgroups. The review committee will make a final selection and adoption recommendation informed by subgroup input and feedback collected through the staff and community review process. I will now provide an overview of the science work plan. Upon the board's approval of the proposed work plan, the work of the AP Environmental Science Review Committee and communication to inform staff, parents, guardians, and community members of the selection and adoption process will begin in February two thousand twenty-five. Our goal will be to conclude the textbook selection process in April and present the committee's recommendation to you at the May two thousand twenty-five school board meeting. The work of the review committee and the evaluation rubrics will be organized according to the primary components listed here. Within each component, materials under consideration will be evaluated according to the specific criteria listed here, such as organization, appropriateness of writing style and vocabulary, and accessibility of digital content to our special populations. The review committee will make a final selection and adoption recommendation informed by input and feedback collected through the staff and community review process. At this time, Mrs. Ford and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um I know, oh, no, not anymore. Okay. Mr. Riffle had a question, but now, Mrs. Hunley?
Yes, so for the K five math, I just wanted to make sure I understood. So there will be the textbooks in all of the schools, or will it be like the reading where it was supposed to rotate to different schools and they got it on different days?
No, assuming that the vendor will be able to provide us with the samples of the curricula that we select at that point, we would hope to have something in every school of both of the curricula. We may not be able to have samples of every, all six grade levels at every site for both, but we would certainly, they'll be available digitally. We will have all grade levels available here on site. And so if we have to rotate to make sure that certain grade-level teams get to see their materials, we will. But our goal is to have them both represented at all sites for two weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Has the um K through five math, is this plan similar, is it initially similar to how the reading one was done? Or is there any of the proposed um curricula or any portions of them currently being used versus something that's right new?
We don't know because we don't know which material are currently under review by VDOE. They have not published the list of different programs. So once they have finished their comprehensive internal review process, they will release the list of programs that they have approved. And so at that point, we will, we will pick up with that list. Um the state is not requiring the adoption and use of a VDOE-approved math curriculum unlike literacy where they were requiring us to only select from their finite list. Um however, given the the depth of changes that have happened with our math standards of learning with this last adoption, we feel aligning our choices to what the state has vetted because they are vetting a a significant number of programs poises us to have the greatest alignment going into the selection process.
Okay. Mr. Riffle?
Yes, um and AP Environmental Science is not new to our wheelhouse, right?
No, it's not.
So it's just an update to.
That's right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Um this might be premature, but when when we do when it does get to the point where we have to approve the final selection, will will we be able to have maybe a little more of the background on how we arrived at that decision? Perhaps, you know, maybe some of the things we were looking for for during the literacy situation and maybe we could ward that off upfront. Okay, thank you.
Every process is a learning process.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item six point zero three, um review of collective bargaining. We received uh at the end of May a formal request along with an affidavit from um president of WJCA uh asking us if we would consider uh drafting a resolution to allow um one, at least one bargaining unit to um engage in collective bargaining with us. Um so this has been obviously a topic of of a lot of thought and discussion. And um we will engage in a discussion now um before we, before I just turn it over to the board for hopefully a robust discussion, I just want to say there are a wide range of opinions and feelings on this and for a variety of reasons. And um they're all valid and we just want to let um let this be a very respectful uh discussion. We we, I know all seven of us and our senior leadership highly, highly value our teachers and everything that they um do for us. And so with that in mind, um I will open this up for uh discussion. Is there um we've all reviewed um the requests and the affidavit and I would just I will open it up for discussion. If if I don't get any discussion, I will go around the room. But um is there, is anyone who would like to open us up?
I'll go first.
All right, Mrs. Hunley, go ahead.
So um first, I wanted to start by saying that um um I take my position in this seat very um very seriously. And so there um was some concern about um uh conflict of interest with me even speaking on this, so I want to address that first because um you know, I I just feel like I need to educate instead of tolerate stuff sometimes. I'm really good at both, but educating is more. So as far as the um um because I was endorsed by the association, there is a speculation that that is a conflict of interest, but under Virginia Code, section two point two dash three one zero zero and Code, section two point two three one zero three, um campaign impact money contributions, there's a whole explanation on that. I'm not going to read that but for the viewing audience, if someone wants to go read it, they can. And then as far as me being a association president in the past, I was for three and a half years under Virginia Code, section two point two three one zero one. Prior membership in the union is not legally disqualifying and it does not create a um anything of of my interest, personal interest. So if anyone wants to go to that, they can do that. Conflict of interest, I do feel if if something's budget-related, uh I have to read a statement about my husband being a here working or anything in closed sessions. So those are the only conflicts of interest that I um will attest to at this time. So with that out the way, when I was president of 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 the association before COVID hit, collective bargaining was just kind of coming to our Uniserve um meetings. And I was a teacher at that time and we were just learning about it. In fact, there was a gentleman who was a retired uh military and um he was a teacher. He was in Gloucester and he was introducing us to it. Um so we were just getting, starting to talk about that. Um when I hear the word union, though, for me, um you know, the definition of that, I think words are very popular, uh I mean, very powerful, but union means being joined by uh in a political context or the other definition is joined with a common interest, interest or purpose. And so but association, which is what we were referred to, was a group of people organized for joint purposes. So anytime we took a political action on anything, it had to be separate. So we've had, we would have people that didn't want to join the association because they didn't want to be political. But we had to explain to them that the only politics is when you invol- involve the PAC monies, which are separate. So um that's what their dues. So with dues, the thing that I liked, a lot of So um, that's with their dues. So with dues, the thing that I liked, a lot of our, our association people join. Because you did get some protection. So we had protection. If we had an incident, we could go to the union rep. First, we could go to the president, explain it to the president. President might get the union rep, uh, the um, they were called Uniserve Director to come and find out. Then that person would sometime meet with HR and they would try to work it out. And then there were times that um, I remember an attorney would get involved. Now, I had access to an attorney, we all did, for things like closing on our house. We got a percentage off. We got um, wills, you could get wills, so things like that. So that was a thing that we felt was very um. Great about having our association dues. Now, when COVID hit, um, um. I just believe we all went through it. We all can remember something happened within our communities, within our nation. Where the respect for teachers, it just, it, it was hard. And so I think, I feel like that's kind of when this collective bargaining kind of had its rebirth. And um, you know, we had a tip line out for teachers not doing the right thing, just, just things like that. We put a lot on teachers' plates and they stepped up to the plate because if you look at all of our scores. Everything that's come out in the last week or two, our teachers and our staff, people worked their patooties off. But we put a lot on their plates and we didn't take a lot off. And so I do believe some of the things that, you know, the rights for respect as professionals are things that. What they are addressing with collective bargaining. Now, collective means done by the people and we know bargaining means to negotiate terms and conditions. We know if we have happy teachers, happy kids, we have happy parents. But to bargain for something that's rightfully yours is where I'm having the most conflict with. Because our jobs, well, my, I can speak for myself, my job is to make sure we're fiscally responsible. And so I'm still wait, there's just a lot of information out there on just how much it costs for attorney fees. What does a contract look like? There's just a lot of those things. So I've tried educating myself in this short period of time on, by talking with the association leadership, to teachers, my colleagues, board colleagues. We've heard, heard from legal, we've heard from, um, I have a mentor on the, you know, the SBA, I've talked with him. And um, so that's where I sit right now. I'm still just listening and gathering information. And so I just wanted y'all to know my feelings on it. Um, I would love a way to be able to. Teachers to get some of the things that are rightfully and respectfully theirs because they're professionals without a whole lot of money and bargaining. I don't even like bargaining. I just, you know, something about bargaining bothers me. And that's, that's my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Would anyone else like to offer any thoughts or comments on this topic? Mrs. Donner?
So as we've, so I want to just say thank you to the WJCA and others that have spent a lot of time. Trying to educate us as board members around this. I think one of my concerns is in terms of educate, uh, in terms of negotiating a contract. Is that we still have the school split kind of looming over us. And so what I'm trying to understand in terms of being fiscally responsible. If I, I don't, I don't know if I can accurately represent that this entity as is, is going to exist. In two years, three years. And so if we're bargaining now from a collective bargaining perspective. And this doesn't, this joint school system doesn't exist, like am I being responsible of? Can I actually bargain in good faith? Because I don't know what unit I am bargaining for or, and who I am. Who I am committing to whatever it is that we create. And so I think that for me is where I'm really getting hung up around is. If there was more of a decision around the split, then maybe I could understand like, yes, we are, we are together and this is something that we can go and look. You know, look at going forward or no, we aren't. And so then there's, you know, a, a, a unit for Williamsburg, a unit for James City County. I just feel like it's in the bargaining, it can be a lot of money that's spent for something that is short term. And so I think that's one of my concerns. I think my other cons, uh, place is that like I, I hear the teachers and then in terms of the. The things that have been presented about like what the teachers' concerns are. And I, again, I, I feel like those are all things that I would love as a board for, and not. Partially as a board, but also as a superintendent to hear like, what are all the other things that the teachers feel like that they're not getting? Where they feel like collective bargaining would help solve that issue? And are there issues that we could talk through and, and figure out what is a solution to those? Outside of a, of a bargaining unit, because I think at this stage. You know, our teachers have good access to the superintendent and to board members. And if we go to, to the point of collective bargaining, then I feel like those avenues get shut down. Because we're only going to talk when it's time to negotiate something as opposed to kind of along the way. So that's the other piece I'm weighing is you get a contract, but then you close your avenues for collaboration and conversation. So that is one of my, my concerns. And you know, I, I would, you know, I, I think I would just also like to understand for those. Divisions that have already implemented this, to understand like how's it going and what worked and what didn't work? And so that to give those divisions some time to let that play out. So then we can learn from them because again, I don't want us to, you know, this is new within Virginia. I'm from New York. Like you've had teachers' unions forever, like it's, those are, I think it's, if there's a better structure there here, it's all brand new. And I would hate on both sides for us to, to negotiate something that we don't understand the externalities. And we end up either hurting the students, we end up hurting the teachers. And so I just feel like. Maybe I'm not forward leaning on this to try to be the first one out there. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Mr. Hosey?
Yes, um, let me just start off by saying that, excuse me, for the past approximately twenty years, I've been in the personnel arena in the, on the federal law side. So I've dealt with unions from different organizations, different um, uh, military bases, et cetera. So I, I've seen a sort of a collective um, site of what unions can do, what unions can't do. Um, how we work with the unions, uh, et cetera. And I, I, I don't want to say this in a bad way, but it's, it's very rarely been in a positive light. It's always been adversarial, um, and, but that's the, the nature of the beast. Um, I got along well with the union representatives at, at different um, military bases, but they had an agenda. I had an agenda. Um, and so, but it, 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 there's just very difficult um, way of dealing with things. When you're sort of adversarial like that. And right now I think we have a very cordial, I think we have a very good relationship with all of our employees, with the teachers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, et cetera. And by allowing collective bargaining, it will turn adversarial. Um, it will turn to the point where um, it's going to be sort of their agenda versus what we can and can't do. Um, and then how do we try to mesh that together? Um, and I think that's a very difficult thing to do. Where now, like I said, with our cordial relationship, I think we can sit down with anyone and work things out. Uh, I don't see why the, the teachers or the employees cannot sit down with the superintendent and, and talk with her. I don't see why they can't sit down with the administration and talk with them. Or sit with one, some of the board members and talk with us and work through the issues that they have. Bring the issues to us. One thing I've noticed about the seven of us, yes, we are very brand new, but we work well together. And we are very open to try to come up with different solutions uh, to different issues that come up. And so I think it would be much more beneficial for us to be able to have an open dialogue. With the employees as opposed to having it be an adversarial dialogue. One thing that, there are nothing I want to discuss is five of us have been elected, two of us have been appointed to serve on this board. Um, and we have, we have been given certain authorities, certain powers to oversee the school system. What we haven't been given the authority to do is really give that power or authority to someone else. Uh, the city of Williamsburg, I don't know, and, and don't, I don't need to know. At whether they've given you any authority to, to withdraw some of that power. I, my constituents haven't given me that authority to um, give up some of that power. So those are some of the things that we need to be considering, thinking about when we're looking at the, these issues. Because once you give up that power, it's gone. We're never going to get it back. Yeah, I'm not saying whether it's a great thing, good thing, bad thing, but the constituents have given it to me. They haven't given it to me to give away. Um, so that's one of the things that um, I, I would be looking at, uh, for that. And just ask that we keep that in mind when we're considering this and talking about this in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hosey. Any other comments? Mr. Riffle?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first I'd like to preference maybe my, my background with Mrs. Henley. Um, I was endorsed by WJCA. I actually sought their endorsement during my election. Um, because I believe they are a very constructive group in our community who has a voice for educators and our staff. Um, and I did not shy away from hearing their concerns. That's the point of elections, is the point of getting on these boards is to be a part of your community. Um, and I feel as if we've talked about a couple of topics that really don't emanate transparency and things. This is maybe the first time we've mentioned the split in the context of something and that's a little scary. This has been going on for over a year and that's concerning. I think we've also talked about some things that say that, uh, we want to have a dialogue. There's opportunities that has arisen between that and the superintendent does have a meetings with them monthly. I think we should talk about those type of things, maybe in this conversation, like what we do do, what we don't do. I, I just have the concern because they're only allowed to do certain actions as a bargaining unit. Um, and as, as a union or as an associate, whatever definition you like to put them as. And we haven't given them really an opportunity to do that with a board perspective. Uh, this is their only opportunity and allowed to them in the code of Virginia, um, and to the power suggestion. We, we are allowed to do this. The General Assembly allows you to do this. It may, may not be a great code section. I, I, I'm, I was an intern in the time when the General Assembly did to do this. I learned a lot about policy work in twenty twenty. Um, it is not a great code section when it comes to how this looks in a path board. And I think Dr. Herring may suggest that a little bit later, but because it is tough, it's, it's really not the easiest path to go about. Um, and the SBA does suggest other ways how this goes out and we've heard a couple horror stories are great things, you know. But it is in the context that, um, it is allowed to us for the section that this is. The only time in which the school board is allowed to talk about personnel outside of the personnel file. I guess this is not a normal scenario. You're talking about a collective group of people of your associate, of your associated instructors or whatever bargaining. Unit has said that topic, um, that they get to then move into the process of going towards a union, um, which. Um, for me, I see it as something positive to an extent, um, because it does bring out some of the things I think the split has started to maybe kind of show our division that there are ways we can progress as a community. From both the county and the cities, um, just their studies have shown that we have things to do. There's a lot to get done and that, that's something I don't see as a bad thing. Um, I actually encouraged it while I was running. There's an article you can read about where I said like, I don't have a place to talk about how that can be done. I'm not on the board supervisor, I'm not running for that or the city council. I am running to assist our students and our teachers. This is a place where we can have that. Um, I, I think if we do, or whatever we do vote on this at the will of the board. I would really consider that we do move towards some type of, I don't, I, I guess they, their only option is a resolution committee when that comes down. But how do we move into some type of, I guess, committee that is kind of constructive and involves two board members or two city council member? Like, how do we get it to be like something that's like, is facilitative and that? Because we, I do want to maintain that good relationship. It is something that we need to keep. But I don't, yeah, the will of the board is very essential to this part of the job. Um, and I may not be on the right side of this issue today. But uh, yeah, this is a tough thing because I think this is some of our workers saying something to us. And we are not giving them maybe the best chance to go about this because it's just not the right time or it's going to be really hard for leadership. And we were elected to do tough things. We were elected to get baggage. I don't have, I don't want to. I don't aspire to do more things in the school board than I, you know, everyone thinks I do and that's not. I, I love public service. I love the idea of what people do in this job. Um, and that's tough for me to watch people not want to talk about what they could do. Because I think that's the idea of bargaining is that you kind of do not reveal things that you could get, um, for the purpose that you could negotiate them. And that's maybe my final point is, is collective bargaining is an idea that which you negotiate in one time, what that looks like. For us, that could be a decade of time, which we get those benefits to our employees. It's a tough scale when you're, we're working on it. I, I understand that's like how we look as, you know, you're good stewards of our money and things we're given. But that's, the reality is like, people want these results now, right? It's the only option provided to them. So I'm trying to be as polite as I can when it comes to this because I, I, it really does hurt. Um, because I've, I've been a subsidy chair, heard kind of the concerns. Like I was a member of the WJCA for a brief three months before they were setting by. Thing is, we're not allowed to be members as a board. Um, I, I believe what they do is essential to our community. And it's going to be tough to walk through. I, I'm going to get very emotional about this. I think I, I may cry. Because it is tough to, because these are people I, I've learned to like and trust. And I think Dr. Herring could speak to that relationship as well, um, because they are the hardest working people in our division. They do not want to do our kids wrong or, you know, point fingers at anybody. They just want the workplace to be better for themselves and their colleagues, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
You first or me first? I'm curious what you have to say.
Okay, I'll go first. I'll give it reach. Mr. Riffle, you can't do that.
Yeah, it's because I look like your son, yeah.
You can't do that to me. That's what I get for going later.
Well, I, I will briefly say something that's a little bit more serious. It has come to my attention that there was some misinformation about um, me seeking some sort of endorsement. I just wanted to clarify, as it's been clearly stated already. As a school board member representing the city, I was appointed, I was doing my due diligence. In meeting with the WJCA, I did not run a campaign. Um, it's done differently in the city. And I did not seek any kind of official endorsement. So if there's any sort of information out there that misrepresents um, my intention or anything like that. Just wanted to clarify um, that for any of the listening public. It did, it did, I've always sought to be very educated, to listen. Before I speak, um, to try to get as much of both sides of any kind of um, issue as possible. Um, and so that is still where I am right now. I think in regards to um, collective bargaining, I have um, very deep. Uh, respect and support for um, all of the teachers, uh, many of whom um, are highly involved in WJCA. Many of whom have, I consider to be some of the best teachers that I've, I've ever met. Uh, many of whom have taught my own children, um, who have provided them with experiences and education that I, as a parent, could never even. Provide them with. So for that, I'm deeply grateful. And I will say that it weighs uh, heavily on me and, and would definitely influence my decision. There's been a lot of feedback and support for collective bargaining, um, not just in the affidavit itself. That there's a majority of our teachers who are seeking this. And so that, that is data that, that I take seriously and, and um, is part of my consideration. And then also teachers that have continually come forward um, during the, the opportunities that they do have to speak to us. That they just, they want a seat at the table, they want their voice heard. They, they're seeking, you know, from they, I've, every time they speak, I write down that they want to be our partner, they want to help us. They um, want to work with us. Um, they want to feel like we trust and respect them. So those are, those are things that I'm constantly considering. I do feel like I agree with what Ms. Henley said. I, I do feel like there's been a huge push. There's been a huge push and support for collective bargaining because, um, they feel that. There's a lot of our teachers who, who want improvement from the status quo. Um, they're, they're somehow not, not happy. They want a change. Um, and, and like what Mr. Hoseng said, I think we are all very open to that. Um, I, I would love for us to consider some sort of exploratory committee or, or something where they feel like. If, if, if in fact as a board, we're going to decide we don't want to, uh, entertain collective bargaining or it's not the right time or, you know, um. If, if we're going to say no, then I feel like we need to offer something where. Teachers do feel like they have a voice, uh, whether it be an advisor committee or something. We, we have so many committees that are helpful for us and helping us make educated decisions. That are best for our students and best for our teachers. So yeah, so that's sort of what's on my mind right now as I consider, um, this very serious, um, request. And, and I am, I, I do feel like I, I understand where they're coming from. And, and I support the reasons in which they, um, are, are really trying to get their voice heard.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavazos, did you want to add anything? Just use your microphone.
So I've, um, listened to, um, everybody ahead of me. And there's been some very interesting comments and some very passionate pleas for consideration of different options. Um, I do believe that, um, those of us who are elected to the board and those who are appointed to the board. Were given, um, given a mandate to take care of the teachers, to take care of the division, to take care of the students primarily. And I think everybody in this room understands that and has accepted that responsibility and has done a very good job from the short time that I've been here. I've been very, uh, very awed by the fact that, uh, this is a very colla- um, collaborative board. Uh, we've seen an example where people don't get together just right down the street. If everyone knows I'm talking about that board, you know, in, uh, New York County, yeah, really, um, had some difficulties. So I think the collaborative effort that we put together is just really astounding. And we've been, um, led by a very nice, inexperienced, um, educated young lady who's, um, done a good job of keeping us all together and keeping us focused. And the professional staff, I think, also has a, a lot of, has made a strong contribution to the, um, to the success of this division. And I think therein lies the power that will get those students taught and educated to move on to bitter and beggar things. I think that this group does have, at their strongest, one of the strongest, um, um, signs is that the protection of the teachers. And, um, I've seen that in, for example, in most recent, uh, uh, phone restriction use bill. I mean, there's, we thought about the teachers, that the teachers were center of how that's going to work. Um, I do believe that, um, some of us have a constituency and our constituencies have a particular mandate for us. And that's why they, uh, voted us in. And so I think we have to respect our, the mandate of our constituency. I do understand that, um, the board has a certain amount of authority. It has, you know, limited authority and, um. Whether, whether or not it's delegated or not, we still have to, uh, we have the authority and I'm not really sure that, um, that needs to be shared. Because we were chosen to do this or elected to do this. Um, I do think that, um, one of the things that people have been bringing up was the fact that there's needs to be some sort of alternative. Uh, to collective bargaining, if indeed that is the road we go down. And I would strongly, strongly support some, um, some sort of, uh, organized effort to, uh, listen to teachers. But I, 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 I am, I don't know, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that teachers aren't being listened to. I, I find that hard to believe. But I, I'm not there, so I can't say that whether or not. But, but I do think that this committee, this, this board and, uh, everybody around us would be more than. Open to some sort of formal organization, um, advocacy committee or whatever to, to, um, hear what the teachers have to say. Um, I, I, I believe that, um, whatever it comes of this, that, um, there's enough intelligence and, um. Humility and goodwill in the group of people here to make the right decision when the times comes.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. And I will just, um. To the conversation, um, a, a lot's been said. I think most areas have been covered on, on different sides. So I won't, um, I'll try not to be too repetitive. One of, I, I, I'm encouraged by, um. By how seriously everyone at this board table is taking this conversation. I know that it, it weighs heavy on us. We all want what's best for our teachers and also our students and all of the staff. Um, I think this board in particular, as new as we are, we have shown ourselves to be very receptive. Um, and wanting to hear, wanting to understand, wanting to act, um, wherever we can. On behalf of, of teachers, um, while. Also leaving ourselves the flexibility to be able to make decisions on behalf of students that we feel are, is best. And, and sitting here on, on any given day, we don't necessarily know what, what decisions those are going to be in the future. But I've heard a lot, um, about our constituencies, but we've also been, um, given authority from the constitution of Virginia. And that is something that I also take very seriously. And, um, at the end of the day. Um, we have to be able to make decisions in the best interest of our students. And we don't want to, I don't want to have a situation where teachers are in competition with our students. For limited resources, resources, by the way, which we do not necessarily control. We don't have taxing authority. We are at the, at the mercy of, of, of our generous funding partners. Um, but at their mercy nonetheless. And, um, so that. A very tight position about what we would even negotiate. And in good faith, um, I heard a lot about wanting to be partners, um, wanting trust and respect. And, and I think that's something that, um, all of us want. I know I want that relationship with teachers. My fear is that, that this would do exactly the opposite. Um, that it would literally put us on opposite sides of the table versus on one team. Um, where we're, we're no longer partners, where, where. It's a more adversarial relationship, like some, some people have mentioned. Um, even though I know that that is not the intent with which the association is coming forward. It's not what, that's not what they're asking for, but my fear is that that would ultimately be a consequence. Um. And, uh. For those reasons, personally, I don't think at this time that that is the, that is the best way to go forward. I think there are other avenues that could be pursued first, um, which we haven't fully exhausted. Um, I know I have met with, with members of WJCA trying to ascertain what is it that's, what is it that is missing? What, what, you know, wi- with full intention of saying like, I will, I will do what I can, let, let, let's figure this out. Um, and, and because I think this is. Even in those conversations, um, posturing for a potential collective bargaining. We're not able to ascertain what those, what those missing pieces even are. So, uh, you know, this, like I said, this board is genuinely wanting to hear, genuinely wanting to know. Where the shortfalls are, um, and, and how we can make that better. If it's because things drastically changed during and, and after COVID and, and our structures just haven't kept up with what the needs are. We want, that's valid. We, we want to, we want to hear that and do something about it. So that, those are, are my thoughts. I don't want to repeat too much of what's been said. But in addition to that, my fundamental thoughts on it. It is also. Bad timing for, for our school division. Um, it's. That probably wasn't known when, when some of our, um, association members went down this path that. Um, with the city and the, the county would end up doing and that we still don't have an answer on, on. What our school division will look like in just a few short years. Um, no one probably anticipated that, but that's where we are right now. And, um, there's just a lot of, a lot of uncertainty, um, that we're, that we're looking at right now. So for all of those reasons, um. At the moment, I would not be in support of collective bargaining. But, um, as you heard from board members, people are still learning and listening and, um. And wanting to educate themselves. Um, I've heard a few mentions tonight, um. More than one, uh, about the acknowledgement that something, something still is missing, something needs to be done. Teachers aren't feeling heard, although I do know we, we have several mechanisms in place. And Dr. Heron has been very, um, forward leaning in, in setting up. Forums for, for various groups. Um, so it's not that nothing has, has been done. But I think that the seven of us can acknowledge that there's clearly a thirst for, for more and, and more interaction. And, and more, um. More say in certain aspects of the job. Um, and so, uh, with that, I would, I would like to. Direct question to Dr. Heron and say, could, could you give us briefly and for the viewing public, a, a brief overview of, of what does exist? And, um, is there? Is there any way that we might explore an option of, of an even more robust employee input, uh, mechanism? For, for different employee groups?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and thanks, thanks everyone for the conversation tonight. I don't think there's a single person in this room on the leadership team or the board that doesn't really support, value our teachers. Every day and, and want to continue that. That's, that's a starting point for absolutely everything. Um, currently for the last eight years, uh, we, we actually set up a, a teacher forum. Was established eight years ago. Um, there's a process, there's a, there's a leadership committee. Uh, there's a, of the teachers of the year and there's representatives too from every building. The current teacher of the year, the previous teacher of the year that meet in a forum three times a year. The leadership council meets about five times a year. And the whole purpose of the forum was to create a place for voice for teachers. That they could bring to the table things that would make their lives better in WJCC schools. Now, we've had some incredible conversations and made some great progress through that forum. Um, they are our lead teachers at every building. They're elected every year, uh, pushed forward by their peers. The membership changes every year. One group goes off, another group comes on. They actually have a forum that they've produced that they, they speak to teachers in their buildings and they push out a forum. And any issues they have, there, there's one stipulation. You present a problem, you bring a solution. Uh, because they're the most creative people in our system. They will come with good solutions for every single issue. And we've actually changed a lot through that, that representative teacher voice that currently exists. Um, for example, we had a, a pretty shaky launch of our Thrill Share. One of our communication methods for teachers, because we had to change because our, our previous vendor, vendor wasn't offering their service anymore. Teachers brought that concern. Ms. Wall and her team brought, came to the, the teacher forum meetings. We talked through what was needed. We talked through what wasn't working. And teachers very clearly told us what wasn't working, which we want them to do. We've made a lot of changes. We've relaunched and we hopefully we've made it better and responded to that voice in the community. Um, we've actually had a lot of input on professional learning. Cause that's a huge piece for teachers and, and what they wanted and what would be better and what would be more relevant. And one of the outcomes of that just this summer was Camp GPS, which was as a result, uh, direct result of teacher voice. Talking about wanting professional learning that was much more relevant. Um, the launch, the whole new teacher thing this year, uh, that's launched this year called lunch, of course. Um, we have our first four-year teachers are actually learning from teacher leaders in that, in, in that. Lunch program, which again, the idea came from teacher forum. Uh, if I go back to the very beginning, we used to have a, an in-person convocation, which took up, you know, two thirds of the day. Getting people to the venue and out of, from the venue. And it was great and we loved it. It was fun. But, but teachers told us in teacher forum, uh, we, we want more time in our rooms to get ready for kids coming. We don't want to get in buses and go out there and do all of that. And so we went digital. And we've been digital now for three years. And that was a huge shift because that was a huge, it was a fantastic lodge the year. And so that was changed again with, with teacher input. Um, we've purposefully reached out every time we have a committee going on. We ask for teacher representation and that again came from teacher forum. We want a voice and what's happening. We have representatives on calendar committee. We've just reached out to get teacher representatives on our, our F P for medical insurance. Uh, for benefits, um, we. In professional learning, we invite input on committees there as well. And there's, there's more we can do. Um, obviously all of this is fairly substantial and didn't exist at one point in time. But I do believe there's still more we can probably do in reaching out even further. Um. At the same time, a year after teacher forum, my thought was, well, we, we don't have a voice for support employees. So we started a, a, a support employee of the year. And then those representatives, those great employees throughout our organization, organization were invited onto a support employee forum. And we meet with them. And that again, it's all directly to me and, but, but whatever staff needs to be there with me to answer the questions. Um, there's nobody in between. Folks can come with their ideas. They can come ask questions. They can come with the concerns. Again, you come with a solution. What, what do we need to do to make your lives better? And so we meet through a couple of times a year with that group and some great things have come out of that as well. Directly to me. Trying to make life better. The whole purpose is to, well, how can we make your life here, your job here better for you as a support employee? It is representation across every employee group, literally, uh, in that, in that, um, forum. Um, we've started a lot of professional learning as a result of that, because we heard over and over again. We want to learn too, not just teachers. So we've done a lot of work with, um, office associates, with TAs. And we're now entering into some more areas as well for next year. Um, before that forum existed, we didn't do any texting in the division. And so we did it all by email and, and support employees weren't getting messages and they weren't getting information. So that was the impetus for starting to have text messaging, getting phone numbers and making sure we got messages out to absolutely everybody. With important information. Um, when we were, um, working through the salary last year and, and all our discussion about where do we need to put the emphasis on salary? We brought it to the support employee forum and we had a walkabout activity and got people to say, where do you want us to put the money? There's only a limited amount. Do you want to put it here? Do you want to put it there? We got their input and, and ended up using a lot of that in the budget process. So yes, there, there is a voice, but I do recognize that. You pull representation across the whole division, but not everybody still feels heard. Um, I do meet with WJCA monthly, enjoy the meetings. It's always a great conversation. It's very respectful. We have a great relationship. At least from my perspective, I hope they believe the same thing. Uh, and we've made a lot of changes through, through that voice and monthly meetings as well. And Ms. Hunley would attest to that, because she used to be, used to be the one bringing the issues. And, and it's, it's always been a great conversation. I, I, I would hope any decision the board would make wouldn't impact that meeting and, and that relationship. But it could, uh, and I am, I would be concerned about that. Again, it's an ongoing communication. But I, I get the feeling it's not enough. I've talked about quite a lot that's, that's, that's out there and happening. Um, I mean, there is a possibility. We, we can as a staff look at a, a more robust employee input process. Um, two members have mentioned tonight, potentially another board committee of some kind. Not a committee, if the board votes no in collective bargaining, it would not be a committee to look at a collective bargaining. If the board votes yes, then we're moving that way anyway. But maybe it's a committee to have more input, uh, from teachers in particular. Cause that's the group who's brought forward concerns at this moment in time. Um, we could look at a bigger process and bring you back some ideas as to how to. Maybe every other year, meet with employee groups or meet with some groups one year and some groups the next year. And actually sit down with groups and have a facilitated conversation on an annual basis, which board members would come and listen to as well. Uh, where we would sit down and, and say, you know, what, what are we doing? What are we not doing that we need to do? Or what are we doing that we could do better? And I think we're really, really open to that conversation. As we recognize, we need all of our staff. We, we realize the work they do and boy, they just have had an amazing year. You're right. In working in our schools and producing results and, and serving our students and serving our community. And we want to do as much for them as we can. And we want to do as much for them as we can and I believe we do that already. But I also understand this need for a voice in some form. And we're very open to looking from some direction from the board as to what you would want us to, to think about depending on what decision is made next week. Because obviously, we don't know what that is yet.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Mr. Riffle, you have another comment?
Yeah, I, I thank you, Dr. Heron. I'm very appreciative of that because I, I think that's something we, we hear very often in our, our two-on-one meetings and, and time. As a board member who's new, I'm, I'm trying to learn how to be a public servant this way. And then you've really guided us a lot in that kind of realm and I, I'm very appreciative of that. And I, I want to state that mostly because there's a lot of people who are part of their bargaining committee who may not know that stuff happens. And because I, I don't know how, how well communicated it is throughout our community that that does happen, it does happen both ways. It's not like we're not trying, it's just, there's no real board member participation in that and that's kind of tough. The only time we do is public comment or, you know, other times of this. But I, I, I'm supportive of the committee to look towards what we can do. I understand it's maybe not enough for them because their result is wanting collective bargaining. Because I think they, I hear, I hear this very often and I don't like to talk about campaigns as much here in this room, but when I was, when I had meeting greets and stuff, I, teachers would be like, I'm tired of surveys, I'm tired of being told, like telling, saying things. Like people want results, people want to see their concerns being alleviated. And, and I, I know we've pointed out a couple today and, but that's really hard to track in public service. I, I really do understand that. Like I, I jokingly wrote a paper in, in college that was about how the two-party system is really easily constructed into the party of doing nothing and the party of change. And it's really easy to be a part of those groups because that's really all it kind of is. And it's not the truth of how it works at all, but it's really easy to point them down to basic philosophies. And that's not the truth of public service, it's not the truth of this board, it's not the truth of any local government. But it was, it was for not government, it was for English, it was, it was satire. So I was just wanted, but I, I reflect on this because I talked to my older brother about it because this is his profession, this is what he does. This is, my whole family is part of public servants and, and it, my older brother has really guided me to, to run for this office, to think about what can I do more for my community and, and with the wheelhouse that I have. And so I'm supportive of that. I think that's where I stand is like we have to no longer just want to listen to things. Like we can do town halls for teachers and do this and that. Like, but at what point do we say like a decade from now, what we've done for them? Or like four years from now, like what, what is that timeline, right? And that's tough. And that's not something easy to ask the chair or you, Dr. Heron, to go out and do. But it is something that we have to intentionally want because I just saw it only gets better. They could serve us affidavit after affidavit, they could come back in different ways. Like I don't know, the conversation doesn't really stay with what can be done. And that's maybe a question I have before we end this time of like, I think it's maybe important for us to talk about publicly what the next step looks like for the board when this does come about. Because I think that's maybe, there is going to be an opposite reaction to, if you're supportive, you know, whatever we're serving back, you know, like some people will be voting no, then people will be voting yes. And it's like, it's a flip, you know, so I will, I'll have to be very clear today like what that may look like moving forward. Because I, I don't want it to be, because you may see something in a public document that is the opposite of what actually the results. Because if you aren't supportive of not having like, running, you're voting down, like, like, which would be a yes vote for saying we, you know, you know, we talked about this. This is not closed session anymore, right? So we were able to, I don't know, I, I wanted to get to where this is transparent for the next time because we're going to have a lot of people show up and say their piece. And I don't want it to be confusing. I don't want the press to get it wrong. I don't want things to people, because we are moving towards something that's results for our students, it's results for our workers. This is, this is hard stuff. And, and I don't want to discourage anyone from the comments I'd said or anything like that, that we aren't doing those things. Because I understand we are doing as much, if not as more than we can every year. So I, I thank you. So that's all I have to say.
We, we certainly have every intention of being very transparent. We, we don't have anything yet, but we will, before, before our vote is taken, there will be, it will be clear what we're doing. Any other comments feel necessary for tonight?
Madam Chair, I may have the, depending the vote at the next board meeting, you know, we'd be very open and, and would want the board members to talk to administration about what, what they feel would work best. If it's not collective bargaining, then what should we do moving forward to create an opportunity for, for voice? We have administratively, we have at the school level as well, obviously. We have a grievance process for, you know, for issues that are much more severe that is, I think, been used very, very, very rarely in the, in the last four years. Mr. Baker may even have a number.
It, it hasn't come up.
There's been, no one has used the grievance process, okay? Which speaks well for our system as well. So nothing has come up at the level of the board. Obviously, we solve issues at, at other levels. So I think the, the question would be if not this, which we don't know yet, what would it look like and where would the board be involved in that? So that there is this access to you in some formal way. And I'm not sure what that looks like, but I don't want to lay anything prematurely like because we don't know what the outcome will be.
Right. I think that's, I think, I think what I'm hearing, if I may respond to that.
Absolutely.
It's a, probably a consensus of all, all seven, I'm going to assume that, that would be willing to look into this, a, a more robust employee input process. I don't want to describe that here because I don't think that we have flushed that out quite yet. But I think that that is something we'd be open to. I do think that there is a role for WJCA to play. I think they play an important role. I think they are successful in the role that they, they play now. And I think that there's, there's a lot that we can still think through and, and learn. Can you describe that grievance process?
Yes, Mr. Baker, certainly there's a, it's a process and several steps that it involves. Do you have it right there?
Yes, ma'am. It's actually part of our policy, G B M, professional staff grievances. And it's actually laid out into code. So the first step is a very informal process for the teacher and the principal. And then potentially they could appeal that to a more formal written process with the principal and then even appeal that to the superintendent and ultimately appeal that to the board. But in my time here, we haven't had that come up to the board, so. But it's, it's our policy, G B M, for the formal grievance policy. And that's slightly different than other, you know, if it's like a Title IX case or a sexual harassment case or other cases like that. But the formal grievance process has not come up.
Is there any way for employees to, to address things that would fall short of, of a formal grievance? They might not want to go through that process. But if there's maybe inconsistencies within a building or from building to building, are there, are there processes for that?
Yeah, Billy, go ahead, Mr. Baker.
No, I say a lot of times if we get those kind of questions, either they're coming through us or they're coming through Mr. Walker or, or Dr. Worley through their principal, if they're having challenges that way.
And, and often if there's a concern of an individual, a lot of folks feel very okay with emailing me directly. And then I will involve the appropriate people to, to have the conversation and figure out what the issue is and try to resolve it. Most often, and, and the way it should work is you go back to the school level first. Because that's where people are living and working and that's where they have the, the relationship with the principal as well.
So I'm just going to ask that question as far as not an individual grievance. So let's say at this time, teachers are having to do things after school hours, like staying for bus duty later than usual. What have we addressed as far as compensation? For example, for anything over their, I mean, because right now the contract says that's other duties assigned. So if that is a major concern, how would we handle things like that? As far as I need to, I'm a professional, I'm working overtime, I should get some overtime pay. That's a kind of, that's just one example. I'm just going to throw one example out as something that would need to be bargained. So what's prohibited, has that come up?
We actually have given extra pay for staying after work and certainly in the last year because of the amount of teachers having to substitute in classes when we didn't have all the teachers there on any given day. We don't, we now do pay teachers to do that. So as issues arise, we try to respond in, in, in the best way possible. Dr. Kiefer, any other examples?
No, I would say that probably the year or two after COVID, when we knew we had bus runs that were late, we would pay and compensate employees that we asked to stay and work. And we tried to start by saying, who's willing, who has time? And, and we, we worked it in, in that direction. Coverage of classes, giving up planning periods. I, I think we have tried to honor our employees by saying, we recognize this is outside the norm. And if, if we're asking you to do something outside the norm, we want to be able to compensate you for that. And in those cases where folks have felt like that hasn't occurred the way they wish for it to, as Dr. Heron mentioned, generally people are willing to communicate with us and let us know that they are concerned or frustrated by a decision that occurs at the building level. And we work, I think, hand in hand with school leadership to help address that through administration and/or the employee and, and try to come to some type of agreement on this is the best path moving forward.
Answered your question, Mrs. Hunley? Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? I would, was that a hand?
I'll, I'll let you go. Go ahead. No, I'm fine.
I, I do want to ask you to look into with your staff formally what options might be available to us so that we can have that to consider for a robust, ongoing employee input process by employee group. And yeah, obviously it's not going to be fully fleshed out, but, but some basics, some basic parameters and ideas that, that we might be able to take into consideration in these next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody good? Okay. Oh, Mrs. Donner, go ahead. No?
Just having a point of privilege, if we can have a five-minute bio break.
Oh, sure. Is everyone, we're, have a, we'll take a five-minute break after that heavy conversation. And we will reconvene at, let's do six minutes, at six-thirty we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody good? Okay. Oh, Mrs. Donner, go ahead. No?
Just having a point of privilege if we can have a five minute bio break.
Oh, sure. Uh, is everyone, we're have a, we'll take a five minute break after that heavy conversation. Um, and we will reconvene um at, let's do six minutes. At six thirty, we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. And I'll echo Mr. Riffle's thanks. This is, this is fantastic planning and foresight on your, on your part and your staff. Um, and I would venture to say though, that next year we don't anticipate a number quite like this based on ESSR funds and, and some other situations that will be different, right?
That's correct. Obviously, ESSR funds have played into the overall amount for the last three years. Um, our perfect um solution is to have the people actually working in every position filled.
Right.
And as we continue to be able to do that better each year, we, we anticipate this number going down dramatically.
Okay.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Riffle.
I think it's important to know how, why we can't spend this money. Um, that's something that I was asked recently, last, maybe last year, I, I was like, why can't we just spend the ten million dollars? You know, like, there, there is restrictions to that. And could you speak to it, Dr. Heron?
Basically, it, it, by code, it has to go back to the city county. And then they have the option of re-appropriating it to us. Uh, we don't have a reserve fund in, in WJCC schools, but at least we know that um it's going back into a fund for schools, specifically capital improvement. Miss You, anything to add to that?
I don't think so. I don't think you covered it.
She's trained me well.
We're all learning here. Thank you, Dr. Heron.
No, no, no orange this year.
Definitely not. Don't like orange.
All right, then we will move on to the next item, seven point zero two, Standards of Accreditation and Academic Progress Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased this evening to have Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley present our Standards of Accreditation and Academic Progress update for you this evening. Thank you very much. Dr. Walker leading off?
I believe so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Today's presentation will provide an overview of academic achievement, accreditation, growth, and student performance on the state assessments. Data from the eighteen nineteen school year, twenty one twenty two, twenty two twenty three, and twenty three twenty four school years will be displayed. Eighteen nineteen data will be a pre-pandemic reference point. As a reminder, due to the closure of schools in March twenty twenty, data for the nineteen twenty school year are not available, and data for the twenty twenty one school year are also not included. Moving on, this graph shows division pass rate percentages for the twenty twenty four state SOL assessments. WJCC is the green bar being compared to the state pass rate represented by the blue bar. The pass rates represent raw data. Simply stated, this means the percentage of past proficient tests, which include first time test takers and any retakes. You'll notice a red line marking the established seventy five percent state benchmark for English reading and writing, and a seventy percent benchmark for mathematics, science, and history. As a division, we outperformed the state average in all five tested areas. And additionally, you'll see reference to the school quality profile in yellow at the bottom of the slide. This VDOE webpage is accessible to everyone in the general public, and it serves as a data resource for this presentation.
Starting at um item seven, information and discussion items, part two. Part one was our um pre-K center design update, and now we are uh at seven point zero one, discussion of the fiscal year twenty twenty four year end financial report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing will give us a brief update uh this evening on our end of year finances for last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I will be presenting to you our preliminary financial status as of June thirtieth, and the year-end surplus that will be returned to the localities. It's important to note that we have not gone through our external audit at this point, so these numbers are preliminary and they are unaudited. My team and I have worked hard to make sure the information presented this evening is as accurate as possible. But as we go through the audit process over the next several weeks, these numbers could change slightly. Here you will see a breakdown of our actual revenue as compared to our adopted budget. Our actual revenue for the year is one hundred seventy two point nine million, which is approximately one point three million more than our adopted budget. Some of the items contributing to the increase in revenue is student enrollment higher than what we had budgeted, which increased some of our state funding, higher than normal interest revenue, as well as the timing of impact aid reimbursements, which increased our federal revenue this year. Our expenditures and open encumbrances amount to one hundred sixty three point two million for the year. When you compare this amount to our revenue, the amount of funds remaining at the end of the year amounts to nine point seven million, which will be returned to the localities. Based on the contract for the joint operation of the school division, ninety percent of this amount, or eight point seven million, would be maintained by the localities in a future school use account, and ten percent, or approximately nine hundred seventy nine thousand, would be retained by the localities. So what makes up the surplus? The funds left at the end of the year are a combination of two things. The first is the revenue that we received in excess of our appropriation in the amount of one point three million, which had no matching expenditure appropriation to allow spending of the excess revenue. The second is the savings on the expenditure side in the amount of eight point four million. The majority of the savings, five point eight million, is from salary and benefit savings from open positions. Our staffing fluctuated month to month throughout the entire school year across all areas of the organization. As an example, on the vacancy listing for the week of January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, we had a total of forty eight open positions, which included positions across the division from instructional to operational. With positions being vacant for longer periods of time, the amount of savings ended up being higher than our normal annual attrition savings. We've consistently had openings for bus drivers, custodians, teachers, teacher assistants, and special education aides throughout the year, as well as the director of special education being vacant for six months. In addition to the unspent salary funds for the extended time, there is also the FICA, health insurance, and VRS benefits not being paid, which contributes to the amount of unspent funds. Additionally, there were savings in non-salary and benefit accounts. Some examples include savings for phone services related to contractual rate changes and canceling a number of portable MiFi units that are no longer being used. Given that fuel is impacted by external variables, the budget must allow for the unpredictable fluctuations in pricing. We budgeted for a higher price per gallon than our average price ended up being for the year. And utility costs also ended up being less than we were projecting this spring. In addition, with ESER grant funds expiring later this month, we shifted expenditures from the operating fund to ESER grants to ensure all grant monies are spent. Some examples include professional development and summer school expenses. And another example is the nine elementary math interventionists, which were added to the operating budget in fiscal year twenty four, but we ended up funding them through ESER an additional year to spend down the grant funds. This resulted in salary and benefit savings in the operating fund of approximately one million. The full June financial report will be included on the consent agenda at the next board meeting for your review, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I think for the general public, can we explain what the future school use account does and how it operates? Because I think there's a little misconception of how that even plays a part in how this stuff works next year.
So the future school use account is set aside on the locality side. Um, you know, this year with um the additional funding we're going to need for the pre-K centers, I expect that we'll be asking the localities to specifically um use these funds to support the construction of the pre-K centers.
So, yes.
Yeah, last year we sent a similar letter with leftover funds, and the timing is really good to have some extra money this year. And so with the board's, uh, chair's permission, the board's approval, we will send a letter across and, and ask that all remaining funds go towards the final payment or final budget we need for the pre-K centers. And that means there's no barrier to having that move forward from a financial standpoint.
Oh, I also forgot to do the, Ms. Huntley, you've done a great job, Ms. Ewing, at doing this. I, I think it's important to say, not just ask questions, but uh, this is, this is, this is terrific work, if you think about it. Um, this is the stuff we're talking about, where we're going through our budget cycle. This is the amount of money we, which we asked for, like, this is a large amount of money. Now we're just making it available to us in the future, so. Um, i- it does come back to things that you had mentioned, and I actually would love to see the list snap from the slide, because it, it is interesting to see what, you know, it's not set on what we do do, because um I just find it fascinating for how local government works. Um, but thank you. It's, it's, it is, I mean, we can come back to our people in the grocery stores. And like, we do have a pretty tight ship here, and I think um Mr. Dr. Cavasas and I like always talk about that. It's like, it's a pretty well, well machined here, and, and it's something to be proud of, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. And uh, I'll echo Mr. Riffle's thanks. This is, this is fantastic planning and foresight on your, on your part and your staff. Um, and I would venture to say though, that next year we don't anticipate a number quite like this based on ESER funds and, and some other situations that will be different, right?
That's correct. Obviously, ESER funds have played into the overall amount for the last three years. Our perfect um solution is to have the people actually working in every position filled.
Right.
And as we continue to be able to do that better each year, we, we anticipate this number going down dramatically.
Okay.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Riffle.
I think it's important to know how, why we can't spend this money. Um, that's something that I was asked recently, last, maybe last year, I, I was like, why can't we just spend the ten million dollars? You know, like, there, there is restrictions to that, and could you speak to it, Dr. Heron?
Basically, it, it, by code, it has to go back to the city county. And then they have the option of re-appropriating it to us. Uh, we don't have a reserve fund in, in WJCC schools, but at least we know that um it's going back into a fund for schools, specifically capital improvement. Ms. Ewing, anything to add to that?
I don't think so. I don't think you covered it.
She's trained me well.
We're all learning here. Thank you, Dr. Heron.
No, no, no orange this year.
Definitely not. Don't like orange.
All right, then we will move on to the next item, seven point zero two, Standards of Accreditation and Academic Progress Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased this evening to have Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley present our Standards of Accreditation and Academic Progress update for you this evening. Thank you very much. Dr. Walker leading off?
I believe so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Today's presentation will provide an overview of academic achievement, accreditation, growth, and student performance on the state assessments. Data from the eighteen nineteen school year, twenty one twenty two, twenty two twenty three, and twenty three twenty four school years will be displayed. Eighteen nineteen data will be a pre-pandemic reference point. As a reminder, due to the closure of schools in March twenty twenty, data for the nineteen twenty school year are not available, and data for the twenty twenty one school year are also not included. Okay, moving on. This graph shows division pass rate percentages for the twenty twenty four state SOL assessments. WJCC is the green bar being compared to the state pass rate represented by the blue bar. The pass rates represent raw data. Simply stated, this means the percentage of past proficient tests, which include first time test takers and any retakes. You'll notice a red line marking the established seventy five percent state benchmark for English reading and writing, and a seventy percent benchmark for mathematics, science, and history. As a division, we outperformed the state average in all five tested areas. And additionally, you'll see reference to the school quality profile in yellow at the bottom of the slide. This VDOE webpage is accessible to everyone in the general public, and it serves as a data resource for this presentation.
Good evening. The next graph shows the school division's SOL assessment data for four years. Twenty eighteen nineteen shows pre-pandemic achievement, followed by three years of academic data. It's important to note that the three most recent years are used in the calculation for state accreditation. Regarding the graph from left to right, the green bar represents eighteen nineteen data. The blue bar represents twenty one twenty two. The purple bar represents twenty two twenty three, and the orange bar represents the most recent, twenty three twenty four. The next several slides will report the data in this format. A twenty three twenty four raw division pass rate results include English reading at seventy eight percent, English writing at eighty percent, mathematics at seventy six percent, science at seventy five percent, and history at seventy one percent. As a reminder, the history SOL scores are not a part of the state accreditation system. And as a school division, we showed improvement across all five content areas. And our staff is committed to embracing continuous growth and seizing every growth opportunity to increase achievement for all students.
This four-year graph shows the raw combined academic performance of our nine elementary schools across the four content areas for the students in grades three through five. Again, the red line indicates that established state benchmark. The orange bar is the twenty twenty four data showing English reading at seventy three percent, mathematics seventy eight percent, science seventy five percent, and history seventy seven percent. We celebrate the positive increases for reading, math, and science due to the phenomenal work of our dedicated teachers, support staff, and school leaders. We recognize there's continued work needed in English reading to meet and exceed the state benchmark with our raw pass proficiency rates. As a reminder, starting back in twenty eighteen nineteen, the General Assembly and the Virginia Board of Education's approved state accreditation system began recognizing student growth on the grades three through eight English reading SOL tests and the grades three through eight mathematics SOL tests for students who are not meeting the proficiency pass rate. The student growth data are factored into the final state accreditation totals for each elementary and middle school. This slide shows four years of raw pass rates plus the student growth percentages from the nine elementary schools added to the raw data for English reading and mathematics. For example, let's look at the orange bars on the graph for twenty twenty four data. The elementary raw pass rate for English reading increases from seventy three percent to eighty two percent due to the nine percentage points of student growth that is added on top as a pass proficient. Mathematics, the twenty twenty four elementary raw pass rate increases from seventy eight percent to eighty seven percent, again with nine percentage points of student growth that's added into the original pass rate.
The next graph shows the raw combined academic performance of our four middle schools across four content areas for grades six through eight. Pass rates include English at seventy five percent, mathematics at seventy three percent, science at seventy three percent, and history at eighty two percent. Overall, our middle school students met or exceeded the state pass rate across all content areas in twenty twenty four, and we see gains in our pass rates for English, math, and science while remaining the same in social studies. We do celebrate the positive gains by our students and the many teachers and staff that worked with each of them. This slide shows four years of data for five student subgroups, with the orange bars representing twenty twenty four data. Once again, the thin red line marks the seventy five percent state benchmark expectation for reading. The short darker line with the orange bar represents the state's twenty twenty four pass rate for each subgroup. For example, let's look at Hispanic performance. The orange bar shows a sixty four percent pass rate for WJCC Hispanic students compared to the state average of fifty nine percent indicated by the short black line. Overall, we performed at or above the state average within three out of the five subgroup areas in reading, and we celebrate the three percent increase for our Black students' reading scores. We are continuing our work to accelerate progress across all groups. The next slide is similar to the previous slide, but here you can see the raw pass rates plus the student growth percentage added into the total. All five student subgroups had considerable growth. Let's focus on the orange bar showing the twenty twenty four results and growth for the five student subgroups. From left to right, we see growth of seven percentage points for our Black students, eight eight points of growth for Hispanic students and economically disadvantaged students, and twelve percentage points of growth for both English learner students and students with disabilities. This is huge, as our school teams are intensively focused on helping all students grow and move forward on their academic journey. We celebrate this positive growth for our students while recognizing the need to continue our focus on growth and mastery within our subgroup populations.
This slide shows four years of mathematics performance for the five student groups. The red line is the seventy percent benchmark from the state for mathematics, and that short darker line represents the state's twenty four pass rate for each of these student groups. So, let's look at the middle set of bars showing the mathematics performance of our economically disadvantaged students. The orange bar shows a sixty percent pass rate, and the darker line shows the state pass rate at fifty eight percent, difference of two percentage points. Overall, when comparing the twenty twenty four orange bar to the twenty three purple bar, you will see positive gains in mathematics for four of the five student groups. This data shows the four years of math SOL performance with the raw pass rates plus the student growth percentages added into the total. The orange color bar again shows the twenty twenty four student data. From left to right, we see nine percentage points of growth for our Black students, ten percentage points of growth for Hispanic students, eleven percent growth for economically disadvantaged students, and fifteen percent growth for both English learners and students with disabilities. All five student subgroups had considerable growth, and we celebrate this and the staff who helped to make this happen this past year. Their focused efforts on meeting the needs of these student groups will continue this school year across our division. This slide shows four years of science SOL performance for the five student groups. Again, that red line is at that seventy percent state benchmark expectation. The shorter dark line represents the state's twenty four pass rate for these five student groups. If we look in the middle of the graph showing the science performance of our economically disadvantaged students, the orange bar shows a fifty eight percent pass rate for the division, and the darker line crossing that bar shows the state pass rate at fifty four percent. Overall, when comparing the twenty four orange bar to that twenty twenty three purple bar, you will see positive gains in science for four out of the five student groups, and four out of the five groups also met or exceeded the state's science pass rates. And we must have focused work to continuing to improve all students' science performance this coming school year. The board's been provided two additional electronic documents as supplements in board docs to this presentation this evening, showing comparison data to our six like or similar school divisions, and also a few of our nearby local school divisions. The next several slides will highlight this comparison data for reading, math, and science. These six school divisions are like or similar to WJCC in total student enrollment, number of schools per pupil spending, operating expenditures, and most student demographic groups. WJCC and these like school divisions are outlined on the map of Virginia. You can see Augusta, Bedford, Fauquere, Frederick, Rockingham, and Suffolk. You will see WJCC data on the far left in green, followed by the six like school divisions in alpha order on the next few slides. This slide shows the all-students' performance raw pass rate in English reading, with WJCC outperforming all six like school divisions. This slide shows that WJCC outperformed five of the six like school divisions in mathematics. Bedford edged us out by one point. This slide shows that WJCC outperformed all six like school divisions in science. School improvement plans will continue to address specific actions and supports to improve academic outcomes for all students, whether it be in English reading, math, or science.
Now, we will take a look at how we performed in comparison to a few local school divisions. Our local comparisons are simply based on geographical proximity, and they are not aligned with our overall demographics, number of schools, or our student enrollment. This slide shows our reading performance compared to three local divisions. WJCC is represented in the green bar on the left, and the overall raw pass rate for reading is seventy eight percent, ahead of two out of three local school division comparisons. The next slide shows raw math pass rates compared to the local school divisions. Again, WJCC is represented in the green bar on the left, with a math pass rate of seventy six percent, ahead of two of the three local school division comparisons. Finally, this slide shows science pass rates with WJC at seventy five percent, ahead of two of our three local school divisions. Now that we've seen how our students performed academically, let's take a look at how school divisions are currently accredited by the Virginia Department of Education. Moving forward, it's important for you to know that a new school accreditation model is in the final draft stages and is set to be approved by the Virginia Board of Education in the very near future. Currently, Virginia's accreditation system incorporates accreditation ratings based on student performance on school quality indicators, which we will go into more detail about in the next few slides. But before looking at accreditation indicators, it's important to know how the state measures each performance level. You've heard us say often, "Go green." Level one is the green color indicating performance that the performance is at or above the state standard. Level two is the yellow color indicating performance is near the standard. And level three is the red color indicating performance is definitely below the standard.
Virginia's current accreditation system incorporates accreditation ratings based on student performance across six school quality indicators for elementary and middle schools. This is an example of an elementary or a middle school accreditation dashboard with the six indicators shown above. This school performance dashboard helps schools and divisions develop plans for continuous improvement based on areas of need. This is an example of a high school accreditation profile containing the nine indicators shown above. The three additional areas for high schools include the graduation and completion index rate, the dropout rate, and the overall CCCRI index, the College Career and Civic Readiness Index. You've previously been provided a colored handout illustrating all sixteen schools' accreditation ratings and performance in each of the school quality indicators, but this slide focuses only on the nine elementary schools. You will notice that all nine elementary schools are at Level One Green for the all-students' performance category in English reading, math, and science. In fact, eight of the elementary schools are at Level One Green status for all six school quality indicators. One school, James River Elementary, made tremendous gains of twenty one percentage points in science to move from red level to green level in one year. This school also still has some targeted work for gap group achievement for its students with disabilities and Black students. All nine of our elementary schools are fully accredited.
The next slide focuses on school quality indicators and accreditation rating for our middle and high schools. All middle and high schools are at Level One Green for overall academic achievement in English, math, and science. One high school is Level One Green for all nine indicators, Lafayette Rams. Additionally, all high schools are at Level One Green for both the graduation and completion index and the dropout rate. Two out of three high schools are at Level One for the College Career and Civic readiness readiness index, known as CCCRI, and this is a positive change from last year. All three schools made significant progress. We do have continued work to do, as we support the needs of students across certain subgroups to focus on closing achievement gaps with our secondary schools. Three middle schools have targeted work to continue improving English reading achievement. And finally, all middle and high schools are fully accredited, and we certainly want to celebrate that. For the next few slides, we'll talk about chronic absenteeism. And as you saw in the previous slides, this is one of the accreditation performance indicators for all schools. We have set high expectations for student attendance in WJCC, and we will continue partnering with our families to ensure students are attending school every day. So, let's take a look at chronic absenteeism for WJCC schools. This graph shows data across four school years measuring the chronic absenteeism rate for WJCC. Chronically absent means a student misses ten percent or more of the days enrolled in school. This includes excuse and unexcused absences. So, if a student is enrolled for a hundred and eighty days and misses eighteen school days, that the student is chronically absent. The left bar in the four color groups represents our division, our division chronically absent rate, and the right bar represents the state rate. The number in each bar indicates the percentage of students chronically absent that school year. For WJCC bars, you will also note the enrollment is provided for the given year. For example, if you look at the orange bars on the right, during the twenty twenty three twenty four school year, ten point six percent or one thousand two hundred students of our eleven thousand three hundred and twenty four enrolled in K-12 were chronically absent, where the previous year, we had sixteen point two percent or one thousand eight hundred and thirty two students chronically absent. We have definitely improved, and the twenty twenty three twenty four rates are actually lower than our twenty eighteen nineteen pre-pandemic attendance rates. In partnership with parents and guardians, the sixteen schools have done tremendous work engaging students and keeping them in school. Two significant division-wide reductions in chronic absenteeism rates are: our Black students' chronic absenteeism rate dropped from twenty four percent in twenty two twenty three to sixteen percent last school year, and our economically disadvantaged students' chronic absenteeism rate dropped from twenty seven percent in twenty two twenty three to eighteen point nine percent last school year. So, some may ask, how does chronic absenteeism impact our school achievement? Let's take a look. Overall, WJCC students completed nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy eight tests last spring. Of those, thirteen thousand six hundred and four were passing scores. As you can see in this graph, student achievement is directly affected by student absenteeism on all three levels. For example, let's look at elementary schools on the left. Six thousand nine hundred and forty two elementary tests were administered, and students absent less than five percent of the instructional days had a raw pass rate of seventy four percent. Students with absences between five and ten percent of instructional days had a seventy percent pass rate, and students who were absent ten percent or more, who are also considered chronically absent, resulted in a fifty four percent pass rate or a twenty percent reduction in performance. The same trend applies to middle schools and high schools. Chronic absenteeism rates cause a thirty percent drop in achievement, and we see a thirty four percent reduction in high school achievement due to chronic absenteeism. It is very clear, strong attendance is directly related to successful student outcomes. We know that if a student attends school regularly, their opportunities for success dramatically increases. We will continue our focus on attendance as we move through the school year. Looking forward to school year twenty four twenty five, we will continue choosing a student-centered focus paired with a growth mindset. School leaders, teachers, and staff will continue setting high expectations for academics, behavior, and school attendance. Teachers and staff will continue to focus on the delivery of high-quality first-time instruction that engages students in learning. Specific to the nine elementary schools, and in partnership with our talented leaders in the Department of Curriculum Instruction, elementary teachers and staff will have a very big lift as they learn collaboratively together, have extensive professional learning, and implement a brand-new, comprehensive core literacy curriculum, Benchmark Advance. The vision stands ready to support the work, provide resources, and promote initiatives for this instructional journey. Teachers will continue using data from common assessments and pre- and post-assessments to gauge student learning and inform instructional planning and collaboration within their collaborative teacher teams. Individual school data will drive the development of school improvement plans and frame the work and interventions across academic content areas. Specifically, goals will be set for gap group work and school improvement plans, which are based on individual school needs. Also, our school improvement plans will also include strategies that focus on writing across all content areas and student goal setting.
Madam Chair, in closing, our goal for this evening was to share the twenty twenty four SOL data, school accreditation information, give you awareness of student growth and achievement, and to know that WJCC schools are moving forward with a positive momentum focused on growth and the success of each student in this division. In partnership with our students' families and the community, WJCC teachers, support staff, school leaders, operations, and central office have worked tirelessly and collaboratively for the success of all students across this division. As we close out this presentation, we want to celebrate the tremendous growth that happened at all schools last year. Please watch this brief video highlighting some of the celebrations of student growth and achievement resulting in all sixteen schools being fully accredited. At the close of the video, we'll stand ready to answer any questions you may have. At the close of the video, we'll stand ready to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burley and Mr. Walker, Dr. Heron. That was a very uplifting and encouraging presentation and and obviously a lot of tremendous work has been done even just in this one year, not to mention the the years leading up to it, so. Well done.
Thank you, and you don't do it without a team. Every teacher, every administrator, every support support person, everybody's involved in any success. And we still have work to do. But to move upward and onward is is our plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? That was a lengthy presentation, but if there were any questions along the way, Mrs. Henley?
Just have comments. I wanted to cheer between every slide, but I didn't. It wasn't appropriate. Especially hats off to that writing that I've never seen writing scores jump up like that after, you know, the pandemic we had. So that awesome. And I'm sure everybody will join me next school board meeting and wearing all green, right? We're gonna go green to the next meeting.
You're gonna have to text me.
You won't have a problem with green. Just just fabulous. Just for the viewing, can you talk a little bit about how some kids can fall the economically disadvantaged or English learner or students with disabilities can be a fall into? Because sometimes that's a little confusing for people.
It is sometimes because you can have one single student who may fall into two or three of those categories. And so their data impacts two or three of those particular reporting groups.
But for all of them to make those gains, I just wanted them to know that one, that child that fell into all of those made gains. Kudos, yeah. Go green.
And that this year is is all about growth. It continues.
Other questions from the board?
We did hear a little bit about how the accreditation system is changing, specifically for English learners. So it's gonna be a new kind of point, I think the state has suggested is like ones we'll consider for the go-green moving forward. I I am concerned about our numbers and that because I think it does kind of really change accreditation moving forward. For every division across Virginia, it's pretty scary to see something like, not like it's a bad thing because I think we are seeing tremendous gains in it. But I think maybe when we do see that how we do next year, it's something to really consider is like a pretty tough thing to kind of put ourselves in because we do have a higher rate of English learners than some of our counterparts and even in the the group that we pulled for the first, like the across the state and then the local option, so. It it's something to to we we know we understand that this is our area of of work. And I don't know how the states will set their bar, but I I think it's it is tremendous work for for both of those disciplines that you all presented today. So thank you for for all that. And I'm encouraged as a young person here and I think as many of my teachers or my friends who are up here who work in the division, they they're very excited to see this presentation during our launch day or when we had orientation and that was something they said was like great to to be with us and to and the central office was hooting hall in the whole time when we saw this. It it takes a a true amount of work to do this type of thing, so I'm 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 in awe and I'm very thankful, so.
Dr. Fass is a pastor who sang, "This was the beginning of our convocation," the video, where we we really created it so that all staff could celebrate at something at every single school. And that's what started convocation.
If there are no other questions from the board right now, I have a question. Could you just elaborate briefly, if it's possible, how growth points are calculated? Is that? Because because it looks like we have, and I don't have a chart in front of me, but it looked like from one year to the next, maybe we went up two, two points in raw data, but then we added nine growth points. So how how did that?
It is very complex, I will tell you that. So we have our raw test rate and those are those students who pass the test right out of the gate or a retake if they're eligible for it. But then the state has defined parameters for student growth. And you have all the student scores, like in a imagine a chart, a table by level. And the state deems certain percentages as you move forward. If a student moves forward so many points on that chart, if they didn't pass the state SOL test, but they showed growth from end of the year, start of the year to the end of the year, then they get added in as a growth percentage point, like a bonus. They count as a pass only for state accreditation purposes, though. So that's why we continue to repetitively say the raw pass proficiency rate. And then we wanted to show how growth gets added on top of that.
Right, and and I'm not trying to pick apart good news at all, but to so to get, say, nine growth points. What does that mean? How many students that that's students that didn't pass, but?
So I'll give you an example. In elementary schools, grades three through five, we had about twenty-four hundred students who took the state SOL assessments. And for the growth for reading and math, there were about roughly four hundred students who didn't pass proficient, but they move forward as defined by state parameters for growth.
Based on their previous year?
Yes, so you have to compare their current performance to their previous. The state looks at that, has it in a chart, and then they measure growth. So roughly four hundred students out of the twenty-four hundred in elementary who didn't pass showed growth. So that's how we came up with the nine percentage points and how the state does for accreditation for the reporting. Nine percentage points for reading, elementary, and nine percentage points for math.
And is it fair to say that of those that did not pass most, if not all, showed growth or?
Significant per number.
To calculate for those four hundred-ish students, they had to have moved forward as defined by the state, yes. So they counted.
Did most of the ones that didn't pass move forward? It's hard for us to know.
And I think it's it's all gonna change next year. They're gonna use a totally new measure beginning, end of last year, beginning of next year. So it's all gonna look very different. And to Mr. Riffle's point, we'll need to come back with the board and explain the new system well in advance that we're all gonna be grappling with in the course of this year.
And that will be true for the entire state.
Absolutely. And when you bring something new in, sometimes it doesn't look good. So it always takes a while to to readjust to to norm.
Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, well, thank you again, Madam Chair. Would it be possible, I I don't know if the DOE, I was looking at it myself from like the little Excel sheet they have of all the hundred divisions there. It's pretty pretty fun to look at. But is it one that we have that's, I was joking, it's not great to look at, but do we have one, I I know you all created this presentation, like, do we have scores at like four each school that we're able to see? I just I just think it's hard to like, you can put charts out and I I don't want to deem anything not right, but I just, I it's more just like reviewing is like, what does Berkeley look like, you know, like, because we we see it in some slides and then not in others. And I think it's something that the public often asks for. And I I think it's something, and you can't do it all in this, right? Like, you could be here for sixteen schools, right?
Well, and that is one reason we highlighted the school quality profile page that is accessible to the general public. Anyone can go on that. And you can get, see this information by school. You can see the chronic absenteeism, the SOL data, lots of information there by school, by division.
I was just trying to lobby one, so thank you. I know it's available. I just, some people are like, where do I see this? I'm like, it's not the only thing. This is just like a subcategory, so thank you.
Can I ask one more? So should, based on these scores and like Mr. Riffle was just saying, we 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 don't see total for each school, but can we assume that if we were to poll, say, city kids, even though we don't do that, based on what we know about the schools, for example, twenty-four percent, there was twenty-four percent black at Matthew Waley Elementary School. Don't remember if that was a specific subject or overall, but you know, increase. So does that look like some of the data that we saw in twenty-twenty-two, would we would expect that to be significantly better?
There was considerable growth across the board in Matthew Waley, which is almost all city kids. I mean, almost every subject, in fact, every subject went up this year. Very significantly.
That's great. Last chance. Questions? Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations again on the hard work. Okay, now we have a number of policies to review. Seven, we've had more. I'll start with eight point zero one, review revisions to policy AA, division legal status.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This policy is coming before the board this evening as part of a five-year review cycle. It for WJCC, we have had a policy AA. And that policy was created as a combination between the VSBA model policy AA and the VSBA model policy BB. We are recommending updating the title to more appropriately reflect the subject, which is school board and school division legal status. Lines eleven through thirteen, language was added from the VSBA model policy. We've updated the legal references and the attorney has reviewed the proposed changes and concurred.
Okay, questions? Comments? I'm seeing none. So we will move on.
Policy AC, which is agenda item eight point zero two, revisions to AC nondiscrimination. This particular policy, the board just reviewed in twenty-twenty-one. However, there has been a state code revision and subsequently the word ethnic or has been added into this policy in order to ensure we are aligned with state code.
Everyone with following state code? We'll move on.
Policy. Gosh, now you got me all flustered, Miss. Eight zero three. BBBC, Board Member Oath of Office. These policies in particular, we really appreciate because we are recommending no revisions. This is simply within the five-year review cycle and we're asking you to sign off on the fact that you've reviewed it and we can move that one on.
Okay. Anybody? No eye contact. All right. Move on.
Policy, the next one we're gonna review is policy BDD. Electronic participating in meetings from remote locations. This particular policy was recently revised as a result of some additional definitions that are provided in state code. As an example, the annual, the added language to reflect the requirement of annual adoption per the code, that's lines eight and nine. Definition of caregiver was added to this particular policy. These, the the, in the definition of caregiver, and with the revisions that we're bringing forward, and because it's in policy, the board will no longer need to vote on a on a nightly basis or at a meeting basis to be able to approve electronic attendance. It's, it is because it's in policy, it will be permitted unless there is a member of the group that feels like it should not be permitted, at which point that is contested and you would want to vote on it. But this is, this is removing the requirement for meeting-to-meeting approval for electronic participation.
Okay, Mr. Riffle?
I think we have a policy in our own handbook about the amount of meetings you can attend in something like this. So this is the reasons why they allow for some like local option and that. I just remember hearing about it. It went to counties, cities, and towns and then went to another committee, but it's pretty interesting that they are allowing this awesome flexibility to all boards and commissions across the state. So I think it's really important to get public service and stuff done, so thank you.
Okay. I think we can move on from that one.
BCF is school board committees. This is being brought forward and recommended for revision in essence because of the changes we're making to the other policy where things such as caregiver have been defined, electronic attendance definitions were added for easier committee reference. Again, the committees will no longer have to vote to approve electronic attendance unless that request is contested and then a vote would need to be take place. And then line ninety-eight goes on to describe the change in the maximum number of all virtual committee meetings allowed per calendar year.
Okay, so this is essentially just aligning the committee situation to what we're doing for boards.
Correct.
Okay, everyone good with that?
I actually have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, is our calendar year based off July one or January one for, is it, because is it based off the term of the school board member or?
That's a question I'd probably want to look up. My best guess would be related to January, so it's the term of service, January to December. I'll I'll work to confirm that, but my suspicion is based on our board. I think there are other boards that are actually different.
We'll 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 find out and and make sure we do an SPQ for you.
Thank you very much.
Public participation at school board meetings. This is being revised to help align with the VSBA model policy and the school board standard operating procedure. There has been a recent revision or update to Virginia Code around specifically indicating that students are invited or allowed to participate in school meetings by way of serving the speakers. We also wanted to ensure specifically that if there are members of our citizenry who wish to address the board, who might have a communication need, we wanted to be able to accommodate that and are asking for a week-in advance notification in order to ensure we have the right type of accommodation in place. You'll note that in lines fifteen through eighteen. The last thing that's probably worthwhile mentioning mentioning here is that lines twenty-four through twenty-five have been, the recommendation is to revise those to meet the current standard operating procedures.
Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, thank you. I'm, it should, we have the code section open. For number line fourteen, it talks about the number of minutes. I know we're not amending this, but I I don't know, maybe I generally think that we may, I don't know what the board did in the past. It was wasn't looked at back in twenty-twenty-three. They changed this procedural thing to move from one meeting to have public comment, one meeting not to. I don't know. I typically don't think our speakers in the public section have enough time for ten, two minutes to discuss. I would be interested to know if the board, I know it's not this topic, but it's in this section, so I'm allowed to ask for a discussion on this about if we should move from two to three minutes. I just want to give our public more ability and that. I just, I hate when people are like rushing and it's like terrible to hear.
So, yeah, so there's a little bit of history on that and I I don't go that far back. I know that it was, it was three minutes apiece, but it was limited to ten speakers, I believe, total. And then we changed it to unlimited speakers, but then it was reduced to ninety seconds, actually. And then that was my my first year on the board and then we lengthened it to two minutes, still unlimited numbers of speakers. So overall, we we have tried to allow more comment and the the two-minute limit, you know, the fact that we have a limit is just to control the length of our meeting, as you've seen, and we've had a few meetings with. You know, the fact that we have a limit is ju- just to control the length of our meeting, as you've seen and we've had a few meetings with twenty five speakers. So that's, you know, nearly an, an hour. We're just trying to control the length of the meeting, but entertain other opinions on that.
I would suggest Madam Chair, maybe this is uh something to discuss in a board retreat and, and have some kind of conversation with the board and then bring it back to if, if you want to at that point in time and your standard operating procedures. That would be the context, the best context maybe to have the discussion.
Right. That's, I think that's how we did it at the last time. So you put a pin in that.
I appreciate it. I just wanted to mention it because it was mentioned to me once, or I think someone did mention it in their public comments twice, at least since being on the board, that like, they're like running through their, you know, it's in, and we, of course, we all see them with the clerk and things, but I, I think this is, this is the part where they get to interact with us and it's pretty tough sometimes.
I know they, they do, I, I, I'm impressed. Most people really do manage it, but, but.
I appreciate it. Thank you for indulging me and I, I think this is a great change to the code section. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Hosein?
And sort of piggyback off of that, uh, some speakers or some individuals have asked me to see what we could do about having speakers at both meetings. Um, just because their philosophy was waiting for thirty days uh between meetings when they can speak, that it's losing some of the luster, that if they could be able to speak at the, at tonight's meeting, they could, it would be more time relevant um as to certain issues that may be coming up or that may, that we may be discussing as opposed to waiting thirty days until they get another chance to speak. Just something I'll just raise to the board and we can discuss that at the next board retreat when we discuss this policy.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions about the highlighted changes that we are discussing tonight?
I do. When I asked, I asked about student participation, uh, we had, there was a couple of maybe misinformation throughout the state. When the VSBA did kind of put out some posting about student participation, there was a couple of bills that suggested that students would be allowed to just jump in to public comments. That's not changed. I, I just wanna, if you could speak to the pub, the student participation section and why it's highlighting it and changing it. Cause it's not what that was maybe portrayed in the public media when they talked about like students could show up and speak, they just have to follow the speaker queue cards. And if you could speak to that section, I'm sorry.
Right. We, we are trying to be very specific that students are absolutely welcome to join us and participate in meetings, but they'll need to follow the same rules as other members of the public in order to be recognized to speak.
Great, thank you.
And we have had students do that, so it doesn't seem like it's been was prohibiting students from participating prior, right?
Not in our school division.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we're not doing this. But I think if people can see this section and be like, what they're doing. So that's why I'd like to disclose this. So thank you for. Madam Kiefer.
Okay. Are we good to move on from this one? All right, let's do it.
Our last policy of review for this evening is agenda item eight point zero seven revisions to policy IKAA, final examinations. This particular policy uh was last revised several years ago in two thousand and four. Uh, there's not a corresponding VSBA model policy. The policy itself is, the revisions are really being suggested related to the fact that lines thirteen through thirty four are procedural in nature in terms of how a student might qualify or receive an exemption for a final exam. Uh, so we are recommending that the, the policy itself be shortened, indicating that final exams are culminating assessments. Give students that opportunity to demonstrate mastery and that the superintendent will develop a regulation that outlines the process to support exam administration. The regulation itself is included for you in board docs, which outlines the process by which a student would qualify for an exemption from the reg, from the final examination.
What is the ref- refresh my memory. What is the reason for needing this to be shortened? Like what is the, what is the downside of having this remain as policy?
Uh, well, part of the dilemma might be that if there are uh changes to how an exemption may be granted, that if, if it's not in line with the policy, then that couldn't occur without board action. What the board role policy-wise is to say that the students will participate in final exams. And then administratively, if there needs to be an exemption process, what would that look like? That's why it would be going into a regulation. So it's the, the balance between policymaking, governance and then administrative role.
Okay, cause how was it functioning until? I mean, were exemptions still being granted before today?
Yes, exemptions were occurring before today. That's right. But as we've gone through the process of looking at outdated uh, older policies, the need to revise the policy to reflect our current operations is something that we've continued to try to do. This one's a two and a half, half, two decades old and needed a look administratively as we brought it forward. One of the things that we felt like was important was to not bind the board to an exemption policy, but to put that responsibility on administration.
Mr. Riffle?
I do have concerns with maybe giving a large amount of flexibility without board approval. It's, it, it seems as like having a context in which exemptions are granted would help us further alleviate for maybe some public misinformation. And we've had a lot of those questions since I've been on the board, especially since last year. And I, I felt like it was like just easy to refer to this section and me to having to ask admin for how they go through school by school. Um, may not be the best way to go about this. I, I, I would like to maybe hear more and which why we approached it this way and and maybe see like, I, I do understand it's very old. It's, it's older than I am. Um, but um, it's uh, I'm just kidding, but.
It's not hard, Randy.
Yeah. But I, I, I am concerned that you, you, limiting, I, I, I think I understand why we do this section and we often give the superintendent proceeding powers for that. But um, I went to school and I thought it was, as a student, I was like, if I do this, I get to get exempted without anyone's my mom doesn't have to talk to nobody, you know, like that's just how it is, like, you know, and so like, I, I, I'm sure it'll be very much tailored towards school and how it would work. But I think that allows sixteen ways of going about this business and it, and I, I just have concerns in that, so I.
I would contend, Mr. Riffle. It's not, it wouldn't be sixteen ways to do business. What we're talking about really is the three high schools. Uh, generally credit bearing courses. Uh, wh- what we've talked about with Dr. Worley is a consistent process from school to school on how an exemption may be afforded students and the regulation itself is very specific in terms of how that exemption would be granted. So that's the follow-on companion piece that you, you may wanna look at in terms of we're providing you with a, a regulation that doesn't currently exist, but that we are spelling out, how might you qualify for an exam exemption?
But the regulation could change at any time without anyone.
Well, the, the regulation, if, if the superintendent were to bring forward a regulation change, I believe through the communication process, he or she would share with you that this regulation is being revised as a result of X or Y. In the event that the board was interested in a different policy, that policy could then be updated or revised.
So the general, when we have policies with re- attached regulations, if there's a change in regulation or not in policy, then I provide you for information, the change in the regulation. As a matter of course, that would be an expectation for your, for your information on how the policy is being applied.
Mrs. Don?
When I think about, I think it's hard as board members to understand what's the division between we are governance versus we are execution. And so at least for me, right, our job is the, is the what, right? And the what is that there is a policy around final exams. The how is what is the administration's job and that's what sits in regulation. And so I think like there's, as we've gone through policies kind of over the years, we've gotten crisper as a board on making sure that our policy stays in the what and that we are giving the administration the piece on the how through the regulations and getting that cleaned up. And so at least I'll say from my perspective, I am comfortable that this is giving the what and then we all have access to the how. And that administration needs to be able to be flexible and to update some of the hows and the regulations and they do bring those things forward to us because that is not our job to execute it. It's just to say you need to have a poli, we have a policy around X, this being final exams. It is your job to go and administer that. So that's my perspective.
Uh, Mr. Hosein and then Mr. Riffle?
I'm gonna be old school on this and I expect about a hundred hate emails for me tomorrow. Um, but I've always been of the opinion that there should be final exams in all classes as long as that, that's what the teacher wants. That is preparing those students for life or college, et cetera. Um, so not sure whether this would be needed or rewarded for that, if that's the route that we go. Um, if we determine to go to a different route where we allow some exemptions, I think there should be a little bit more um, meat on the bones for the policy as to like how or, or I guess what would be, what would determine an exemption? Um, or what criteria would, would, we would be looking at for an exemption and then let the, the regulation dictate how to implement that. So I think it'd be, if, if we're gonna go with the route that we're gonna have exemptions, I think there needs to be a little bit more into this policy than what's currently there.
If, if I may, by policy, you are currently allowing exemptions.
Right, that's our current policy allows.
Right, so that there, there are already, there is already a pathway to an exemption by way of policy. That pathway is the same when it moves into regulation as well. So if what you're saying is you want more stringent exemption guidelines, the policy would need to be rev- if you want that in policy, that that would need to, there would still need to be a revision to policy, if I understand what you're saying.
Either, either that or keeping what's still currently there as, as the policy.
Okay.
Mr. Riffle, go ahead.
I, I'm listening to Ms. Donner. I, I do understand the role of which, but we have afforded ourselves this since nineteen ninety seven. So, or ninety seventy nine, that the school board does have jurisdiction over how exemptions should come about. The state has not changed this policy. So I, I think it is in our wheelhouse to keep um public and allow for not a second channel to be created to how this is created. I, I, I think we, we get this problem where like we, we like, you know, transparency is a very important part of this and I, I would, I'd want to hear more, be more from Dr. Worley about how this is created. Cause you know, I have three schools, right? But, and, but you're not willing to share it publicly in this document, right? Uh, but you are able to tell me there is a plan, right? Like, but that's, it's kinda like, kinda both ways here.
I, I can say for the work on this policy, all three high school principals were very um invested in the process and, and, and actually coming together collaboratively on this is how it will be at all three schools. Um, they're doing the work at, at the individual schools, which is outlined in the regulation. And I think one of the things that Dr. Kiefer said at the beginning is a reminder, not all school divisions have an exam policy and the VSBA does not have a model policy. We, we think it's important to say, this is how we are going to um monitor what's teaching and learning at the end of the school year, but also the board has heard over some of the recent meetings that we're doing some work with grading and policies and exams is one of the things that we're looking at as a division. We're going into our second year of work with that. So there are constant con- conversations about that with input from our teacher groups as well. But collaboratively with input from teachers and our three high school principals and also researching what other school systems do. Some school systems do not do final exams. They do culminating assessments. We felt our best minds were together and this is where we landed. Here's your little history.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. I'm, I'm just leaning on to the, I don't wanna change this. I, I, I understand the work has been gone into it and just from a student perspective, from like, you know, I truly wish we had a student representative in some form or this has went to the CAC committee cause I don't know how involved, like, this should be defined and it shouldn't be defined yearly. It shouldn't be defined, it should be defined in like understanding or anything. It will be defined yearly. I understand it will be told to students and it will be explained to parents. It's in the handbook, right? Like, but like, for us to not be here and to not me have the ability every year to look at it again. It's like, I just have to trust that you're doing it. Like, there's a lot of flux coming in the future for this stuff and I just, I think it's, I don't know who's gonna, I, I hope you're sticking around, Dr. Worley, cause I like to see if it's implemented and like hear more about it, but I, I'm a little more concerned of you know, we had, we'll talk about power earlier and it's like passing it along is like, not maybe everyone's staying, but now we're all cool for it. So it's like, I don't know, like.
Well, do we want to send this back to policy committee or do we want to just move it forward and then vote how, you know, vote the way, the way each individual?
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak.
Mrs. Hunley?
We may get a thousand emails from twelfth grade students who maintain a B average.
No, I don't, but it shouldn't. What we're saying is it shouldn't change anything, right? It shouldn't change.
I, I don't envision our processes changing. What I envision is that it's no longer uh, in a policy that says here is the exemption process. What the, we, we have tried, I think, over the last three or four years to pull process pieces out of policy because that's, that's not necessarily governance. Um, and, you know, we've, we've talked about grading. There, there's not state code on final exams. There's the, the code on assessment is related to state assessments and standards of learning assessments. This is about examinations at the high school level or credit bearing level for students to demonstrate mastery, which was the impetus for bringing the policy revision forward. That, and it was frankly out of date and needed a look by administration so that the board could say, we, we've addressed this within the five-year window.
Okay, well, just one more comment and then we're gonna.
Yeah. Um, I would just wanna maybe the benefits of sending it back to policy, but I also would, to, why can't we just add like lines ten through eleven to the bottom of this section, which gives you flexibility if you wanna change it, you know, I, I just don't understand why it has to, you know, I guess you're like one of the lead subjects, you don't have to worry about what the section between, but I, I, I think people for like, I don't see a way that like I can explain this and not have to keep passing this along still. It, it doesn't change my, my job as a board member. I mean, it doesn't make it easier for me to, to sit here and be like, I know this is like now, but I have to learn it every year. Like, you know, you don't have to, it's not defined anymore and IKAA, it's, it's, it's gonna be given to the three school. Tell me I'm wrong, but like this is, this feels a little.
It's, it sits in the regulation. So like if you go into, if, for anyone in the viewing public that wants, wants to understand, right? You click on the policy and then for, for policies like this, there's the regulation that you click into, which then would explain all of this. And so it's not, it's not a regulation that sits individually at every single school. It is a division-wide regulation and, and so all that we're doing is we're taking the same language that's here and then putting it in the regulation, which explains the how you do this. And it's, it follows along the lines of what we've done in other policies where we've taken the how out and put that in the regulation. And so the regulations aren't like I, I don't know, at least in my all year and a half on the board, the regulations aren't being chained. I haven't experienced them changing without a conversation around regulations being changed. And so they will come forward and say, we have changed this part of the regulation, but it's not something that changes yearly or that is all that fluid. Like they tend to be pretty static. If you go and you look at regulation changes. So I would say I am comfortable with moving this into a regulation where I think it belongs. And I mean, I, you haven't gone this, but I would, I would, I think maybe we can pull. I don't wanna send it back to policy. I'm ready to vote on it and I would say maybe you pull it out and do, it's not in consent, but that's just where I am.
I, I think we can, I think we can probably vote on it if you, if you'd like to have it as standalone. Um, so we can have a separate vote on it. We can do that.
If it's just me, I, I mean, I can maybe talk.
One board member can.
I, I understand that, but I, I'm not in against it. I just like wanna know what the policy is, you know what I mean? I want, and I know I can see it, but.
Let's, let's, um, Mr. Hosein?
No, I was gonna say if, if you're looking for someone to.
You're not on.
I'm sorry, if, if you're looking for someone to ask that it be pulled out in the separate vote, I'll.
I was gonna, yeah.
So move.
Or I was gonna say, we'll, we'll just, we'll move it forward, but we'll have it as standalone. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now for the easy part. Action items. Um, nine point zero one, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personal actions as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Donner and Mrs. Hunley. color?
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosein?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
And nine point zero two, approval of release from compulsory attendance.
Madam Chair, I move to approve that the students named in cases number R two four two five dash zero five and number R two four two five dash zero six and hash, um, number R two four two five dash zero seven be released from compulsory attendance.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
I give it to Mr. Hosein. It was very forceful.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, nearing the end. Um, board member comments. Mrs. Hunley, would you like to start?
So typically people turn green when they're sick, but um I was elated to go green on the the hall of progress that the schools made, so super excited. Also, I was excited that someone wanted to go to with me on a school wellness check and that was Mr. Baker. Because I'm sure he knew I had my camera. But we went to Berkeley and that's just a beautiful sight. I mean, and that's something that Mr. Riffle talked about, our buildings are just nicely maintained. So that's the one thing that Mr. Chikaridis was so proud of, all the new painting and the lighting and the murals and the kids were on their honeymoon phase as they will be, it was all quiet. And then we went to CBB, so I was excited to hear our preschool um design presentation tonight because we went down to bright beginnings and we saw how they have a little office under the stairwell. And we saw how one, two grade levels are in a different, whole different floor than the other. And I know that once we get these sites up and running, um, it's gonna free up a lot of space. So teams can stay together and people, teachers can have their lounge back um and things like that. So um, and we did go because um just for board to know that, a lot of times I would hear from um, uh, teachers that no one ever comes out to the learning cottages, which trailers. And so we did go into the learning cottages and um we need to remember that they are part of the school too. So anytime we go on visits to also pay them a visit as well, even though you have to walk out in the elements, they gotta do it too. So I think we should do it as well. So those are my comments for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mr. Hoseng.
I just have two issues I want to raise and ask the board to, I guess reconsider uh some issues. One was done uh at the last meeting where I was not present uh regarding the parking fee uh for students. And I would just ask if we could reconsider that uh so that the students do not have to pay a parking fee um to park at the high schools. Um, I just think it'd be easier for the students if they didn't, wouldn't have to uh pay a fee. I mean, the the parking lots are already there, the parking lots are already paved, et cetera, there's no real um use except for other fees or other issues that we use those, that money for, so I would ask if the 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 board would want to reconsider that issue. And two um would be regarding the gender studies um program. Uh, when we discussed it back earlier this year, um, there was only one issue that was in my m- memory that was raised that we were voting on and that was whether that we were gonna have um, um, I guess, boys and girls in fourth and fifth grade learn, I guess, attend at the same time the the sex education. Um, there was also a different provision that was included where now that the boys and girls are gonna be separate, they're still going to learn about the opposite body, opposite sex body parts. Um, and I think that we should uh take that up as a board to determine whether that would be appropriate for the fourth and fifth graders to learn about the opposite uh uh sex body parts. Um, again, that issue was a change for this year and there is no vote from this board, so I would recommend that we reconsider that also.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Mr. Riffle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to thank you to the the public, I didn't say that in my regards with the collective bargaining. I've I've tried to engage with a lot of different stakeholder groups and people who typically send me emails that are upsetting. They think I'm mad at them, I I just want to hear more about what their perspective is and then why, maybe why they're against or for their issue. Um, from it, I think it's easier just to say like why you're against it or what you, but I asked them a question like, well, what makes you say that? Further is like, understand maybe more of a personal perspective, so um I've been, I've been thankful to to hear more about that. And and I I think it's important that we do engage in those type of discussions with uh the public and 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 hear from our staff and then from our 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 people around us, so. Um, I would say thank you to Ms. Walls, we went to uh Lafayette and DJ and it was super fun to just kind of walk around and hear from the well, the cell phone policy and hear lots of students walk up to Mr. Rice and ask him where the things are. It just feels like, you know, that's something I didn't do as a student, but it it's pretty cool to see that like our ministers are held in that regard and and people are willing to help each other. And um it's, I don't know, it's 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 a very different type of culture that that has to bring, so. And just a testament to that. Um, I do want to mention like a cute little story, um, I don't know, Ms. Walls and I, we're sitting in the office for DJ waiting for other principal to do the morning announcements, which is, he's very, a lovely voice for the radio, um, but there's a student who like was coming in maybe a couple minutes before that and there he was like, it's not what I go, mom and dad's hand, you know, and and I think that's and I do speak to all the S O L, come up and be like, come on, buddy, let's get the class. And it was just like, that's such an, this, it was just, I forgot like that, that was what happens in the beginning of the year. And so it's it's pretty cool and we have great staff that support our students in in all ways and it's just awesome. The results we saw from our academic achievements are in that same vein of like, the care be goes beyond what a score and like what comes on the sheet. Um, this is, it's education and this is stuff that like teaches people how to become better, how to be something else, right? And so I'm thankful for what we have, um, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Chen.
Oh, um, uh, I've really enjoyed convocation, that was my, sort of as a, as a board member, that was my first experience uh with the virtual convocation, so that was a lot of fun and I I enjoyed the hype and I've been using my choose growth uh journal, I'll use it all year, I've got my rubber band here to remind me to stretch and grow. Um, so I I thank you for all the effort that went into organizing that and getting all of our teachers excited for the new year. Um, so and and also thank you to all the effort that went into getting our our students ready for the first day of school, getting them to school, getting them fed, um, getting them excited to learn. Um, the, I have also heard great positive feedback, I've only heard positive feedback from the no cellphone policy from from many, many people, so um that's, that's always great to hear enthusiasm um for for those decisions, so. And then I'll just say real quick, thank you to Principal Ellison for for hosting Dr. Brown and us. Um, we went to visit um Hornsby Middle School and um I enjoyed um spending time with some of the teachers and students there. Um, and then also we visited, um, Principal Switzer uh took us around and um we got to see lots of morning meetings and circle time and the elementary school, they're so cute. And um we got to consider, you know, very important questions like, pool or trampoline, ice cream or popsicles? So that was, that was really like a highlight of last week. Um, so and and then, of course, I I can't, uh, I've got to mention um Mr. Lambusta and Mr. Snipes. Uh, thank you for showing us around operations, we got to say hello to the bus drivers um and 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 talk to the dispatchers and and just see transportation in action, so um that was, that was a really great experience.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavassos?
Yeah, I can make it kind of brief. Um, number one, uh, sometime in the past, I'd made some recommendation that we have a moment of silence at our um school board meetings. And I was informed that this could be done at a retreat, but I fortunately for medical reasons didn't make the last retreat, so.
We do, we did, we did mention it and we kind of put a pin on it because we didn't have you there to so we, we didn't forget, but.
No, 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 I realize that, so um whatever the process is, I hope we can resume that. Um, number two, there's been, I continued cry for lacrosse and I know um some folks already put the money, put the dollar signs together. Um, I'm just curious if there's any way we could, what's the process to get lacrosse, Randy? And buying, well, we've been thinking about.
But girls don't like lacro- lacrosse?
As a matter of fact, that's why I want it. Because I I think that's another way for them to get scholarships, I think it's, I I know it, I know, I'm, these are two guys, I didn't know that you wanted it, but but now there's four on us.
There was an SBQ about, did you read through the?
I did, I, 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 uh, I, oh, I'm sorry, what would you?
But I'm just saying, just making sure you read through the SBQ because that did outline some steps and some costs and so.
So what what are we gonna do?
I turned off for the night. Budget process, um, because there's a cost involved, as we go through the budget process this year, we will bring the information to the board, explain what it involves, what it costs, and then it'll be put in that pot to compete with everything else that we plan to do next year.
Okay, so I can tell everybody who keeps um recommending that I do this, that this process is being made, progress is being made.
Hold the thought.
Okay, good, 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 fine, thank you. One last thing. Um, uh, uh, is it E S L or is it E L L or is it both?
And multiling- multilingual too.
There's, there's English as a second language and then there's English language learners, one as a subject.
And most recently, multilingual learners.
Right.
Yes, yeah, so.
Different terms depending on state, federal, so we ta- they're interchangeable.
See, that's, that's one, the the question I was gonna ask is there's some way, um, whoever runs that program, just give it like a brief or presentation as to what we're doing and those three different divisions.
We can get you that information, absolutely.
Yeah, we asked for that at the retreat as well, so we have already.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry you weren't there.
Should have been at the retreat.
Did ask for an overview, so you're not remiss in asking for that.
Good, thank you. Amen.
Ms. Donner?
Uh, thank you, I just want to say thank you to all of um our teachers, staff and students for uh getting us off and up to a good start. And for the, I was pleased here, only ten cell phones got confiscated that first day, which is amazing. Um, I've also heard gradually even from from some of our high school students that they can actually focus a little bit more, so I think in some ways they are happy the adults took it away.
Yeah.
Um, so wonderful at that. And I just want to commend everyone that's worked so hard on our academic results. You, we still know there's a lot of work to do and we've come really, really far. And I just can imagine that there's been a big spotlight on that um over the last, over in the spring. And so I think to those that have been concerned, like, yes, we're not saying we're done, but a lot of movement and momentum is happening, and so I'm excited for that to continue. Um, also want to, again, I know we've had a very robust conversation about co- collective bargaining and I just want to say it's something that is, I don't think it's a decision that anyone on this board takes lightly and is trying to be very, very thoughtful about it. So um we can, we appreciate the continued, you know, advocacy and and just sharing different perspectives. And um I will also do my last, like, I love the bus drivers, shout out to the bus drivers. My daughter was excited to get on her bus because she missed her bus driver all summer. And the last few weeks was talking and wondering about her, so. Um, they they are the first people from the division that greet our kids in many cases and I think it's just a really special, they're special folks, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Um, I too enjoyed my first day of school tour with Dr. Heron, we went to um Warhol, Tuane Middle and Norwich, and that was just very exciting to to feel the first day vibes at at three different levels of school. Um, of course, the the youngest ones are, I I have three kids and I forgot how small kindergarten. My kids aren't even all grown up yet, but they were so tiny and it's just so cute and and see the enthusiasm with which they were greeted. Um, I just, it's just such a wonderful welcoming environment for our, for our kids. So um, thank you to all the teachers and all the staff and all the bus drivers and everybody behind the scenes here. Um, it's it's such a heavy lift to get a a new school year off the ground and then especially with all the things that we've been contending with over the last year or two, uh, year or two. Um, I know it's been said, congratulations on on the incredible improvement, especially just for, that we're looking at one year. That is amazing, um, it is, it's fruit coming to bear that that was in the works for, you know, since the pandemic ended. And so it's not, it's not just, not that like everyone just woke up this year and decided to start working, it's it's been going on, but this is now we're finally seeing some of the fruit and more fruit is to come and and more work is to be done. But um, but we acknowledge, I know this board is is very focused on academic achievement. I know our community is very focused on academic achievement. It is the reason that we all are here and and it is, it is really the only reason at the end of the day that we are here is to to ensure that our kids excel. Um, and so it's very encouraging to see that that is happening and um and and uh groundwork has been laid for that to continue to happen, so congratulations to everyone that made that happen. Um, and I just want to thank my board colleagues for the um thoughtful discussion on collective bargaining. I know that is one of the heavier topics that we've discussed this year because there is a lot of strong, there are a lot of strong feelings, emotion. Um, we all, we know real people with real faces and real lives and so we're not just um dealing with the hypothetical, we're we're dealing with with real um people that we care about. Um, there are just many, many factors that we also care about and is all, are also our responsibility. So that is um a lot to weigh, so, but thank you all, I know you're you're putting a lot of thought and effort and time into that decision, so. Um, so that will be it for me for tonight. Upcoming events. Our Special Education Advisory Committee will meet on September twelfth at six thirty P M here in room three hundred of the annex. The V S B A Legislative Advocacy Conference will take place on September nineteenth at nine A M. Um, Chesterfield Career and Technical Center, um, Adelothian, Virginia. I think maybe a few members will attend that. Uh, the Policy Committee will meet on September twentieth at eight thirty A M in room two oh three of the School Board and Central Office. And our next meetings. On uh September seventeenth, we will begin a closed session at five forty five P M here in room three hundred of the annex, followed by our regular meeting at six thirty P M in James Clear Middle School Gymnasium. And in October, on October first, we will start our closed session at four P M here in room three hundred of the annex, followed by work session with action items at four thirty P M, also in the same room, uh, three hundred of the annex. And I believe all of our agenda items are set for the next regular meeting with that one standalone policy. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.